Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular board meeting. It is March 25, 2025. It's 5:07, and I'm calling the meeting to order. And with that, I would like to call on Perry Galardian to lead us in the flag salute, please. Thank you, Perry.
Hi, please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Gunner Walmsley, I would be happy if you would come and read the mission and vision, please. Thank you.
Our mission is educational excellence. Our vision, our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Thank you. Call on Rocco Rizzoli, if you could join us and read the community pledge.
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school, community, and members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you very much, Rocco. Okay, if I could get an approval of the agenda, please. Motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Manicherry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. Hasty, is there any report of closed session?
There is no report from closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will proceed with our teacher-student spotlight, and I would like to turn this over to Mr. Stewart, as we will hear about some of the wonderful things that have been happening.
Thank you, President Marcus. Dr. Hasty, Dr. Seaman, Ms. Collins-Williams, Board of Education, thank you for having us here tonight. We have several different folks that we're going to recognize and kind of hear from tonight. I'm going to change the order a little bit. For some reason, our wires got a little bit crossed with some of our students, so I want to try to have as many of them honored in person as possible. So with your permission, I'll start with our adult spotlight first, and then hopefully we'll do our student spotlight last. So I'm going to start with our counseling team. If we could have the counselors come up here and sort of join me up here, please. All right, so our counselors are rock stars all of the time, but in the last couple of weeks, we received some incredible information about an achievement that they earned. And so I'm just going to kind of go through a little bit about what it is that they have accomplished for our school, and then have an opportunity for you all to maybe ask them questions if you so desire. So our administration is incredibly proud to announce that our school counseling team, as we can see up here, has been awarded the Recognized ASCA Model Program, which the acronym for that, because we love acronyms in education, is RAMP, the designation from the American School Counselor Association. This esteemed recognition is granted to schools that demonstrate an exemplary commitment to comprehensive, data-informed school counseling programs aligned with the ASCA national model. Since the RAMP program's inception, about 1,000 schools nationwide have earned this honor. In California, there are currently 18 high schools that have achieved RAMP status, reflecting the rigorous standards required for this designation. And I just want to highlight that. If you want to think about the number of high schools that we have in the state of California, we are about one of just about 20. So it's an incredible accomplishment. The BHHS counseling team's accomplishment underscores its dedication to fostering academic development, career planning, and social-emotional development for all of our students. The journey to RAMP designation is a rigorous process, as I'm sure they could attest to. They're still catching up on sleep. It requires school counseling teams to collect data over an entire academic year, implement the ASCA national model framework effectively, and demonstrate evidence of direct and indirect services that lead to improved student outcomes. This comprehensive approach ensures that the counseling program is both effective and aligned with national standards. Among the many positive things that this has, we have seen as a result of this work and the work that these folks do daily, but it is evident in many areas, including the tailored support provided to our English learner students, to responsive adjustments made in course selection process based on community feedback. And so they've worked really hard always, but certainly over the last year, to be responsive to issues that have come up in our different advisory sessions, as well as taking feedback from our community. So with that said, we are incredibly proud to announce that we have become a RAMP school, again, about one of 20 high schools in the state of California. And again, it underscores just the incredible work that they do. And so I would like to introduce each person we have here on the team. Over here on this side, we have Mr. Greg Jackson, who is one of our comprehensive school counselors. We have Ms. Ally Norman Franks, who has spearheaded our Normanade Wellness Center for many years. I'll kind of go out of order, and she's joined by Jen Peppin, here on the left, who is another one of our Normanade Wellness counselors. We have Ms. Kristi Bond here. She's had a bit of a title change this year. She is now our counseling coordinator and really deserves a ton of credit for her leadership in this process. They all did an incredible job, but Kristi really led this group during this process and spent, again, many hours on her own, you know, cleaning things up, making sure that the submission was perfect, as did they all, but a huge debt is owed to Kristi for her work in this. Ms. Yajene Nam. Mr. Eric Sanchez. Ms. Paulina Vu. And then last, over here is our college counselor. This is Mr. Matthew Neger smith. So on behalf of the high school, as both the principal but also a colleague that works with you guys almost every day, I cannot tell you how proud I am of what you do. And the reason I'm so proud is because of what it means for our students, the incredible 360-degree comprehensive program that you offer for our students, from academic counseling, social-emotional wellness, preparation for college, and beyond. Our students are really, really lucky to have you, and we're very thankful for all the hard work and glad that you've been recognized with this honor. We're going to take a picture.
Let's all stand up. Let's all stand up. Sigali, one step in. Yeah, perfect, right there. Okay, everybody smile. Three, two, one. Stay there one second. Three, two, one. Perfect.
I think the board might have a couple of things to say if you guys want to stay up here.
Thank you all for joining us. I just want to acknowledge you. You're officially, I would say, the blood running through the veins of Beverly Hills High School, and it has not gone unnoticed by myself, the board, and also the parents, and most importantly, the students. I know it was not easy coming back from COVID, and things were, you know, unorganized. The students were different. It was not the same place. But I saw with my own eyes that all of you really stepped up and stepped in, and you took control of our classes. You're the first ambassador that our eighth graders see when they come up to the high school and they start planning, and you know them from when they're 13, you know, and they make their way up. And so I hear your praises from eighth graders through 12th graders. And so thank you for all that you do. Later tonight, we're going to be speaking about maybe enhancing the Career Center, and hopefully that means, if my colleagues and I can agree on it, we'll be giving you more resources and another team to work with so you can be more effective than you already are. And my only ask of all of you is that if you need something to do a better job, or you're seeing that something is not the way you would hope, to please let Mr. Stewart know and please let Dr. Seaman know, because the board is here to serve our students and to serve you. So we won't be able to do that unless we know what's going to help you do the best that you can for them. So please keep in touch, is what I'm asking. Thank you.
So thank you so much for all your hard work, and you have an incredibly important position with our students as a daughter with a high school student. It is incredibly comforting to have counselors that are there for them and guiding them and giving them the initiative of developing their dreams and their goals, and we appreciate every one of you. And we do want to give you extra resources and make sure that, you know, every single student can succeed and move onward. Thank you so much.
So as I said last time when we spoke about this, a lot of rankings, and like when we think about moving towards blue-ribbon schools and schools to watch out for and that type of thing, we have to remember that it's not just about numbers and academic achievement. It's also the engagement and support that we give our students. And you guys are integral to that very important criterion in terms of making the mark in ratings. It cannot be done without you guys. You offer resources and support, not only to the children you serve, but to the parents. I know I worked with Ms. Bond very happily to get my son all of his stuff and his documents in on time, and I was very grateful to Ms. Bond. And I know you guys do a lot of things like that, and it's absolutely essential and very appreciative. Thank you.
I want to congratulate you on this wonderful honor, and I want you to know that it's the whole group of you that is making our district come up in the world and achieving our educational excellence with your help of the students to achieve what they want to do and where they want to go when they come out of school. I would also like to compliment you on last year when we made an extra effort to have all students being able to change our, alter their schedule for that week before school. And what you did to make that first week before they even got there so easy for them is to be commended, and I really want to appreciate, show my appreciation for that. That was a wonderful thing to do, and I know you'll do it again this year. So I want to wish you a wonderful year, a great summer, and I look forward to seeing you next year. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Stewart, you're up again.
Excellent. I am pleased to call Ms. Neelis to the dais. So this is Barbara Neelis. She is one of our co-English department chairs, longtime teacher at our school, and is also our WASC whisperer. So she's here to talk a little bit more about what the WASC process is like. I know, thankfully, we were grateful that all of our members of the Board of Education came to our Sunday evening WASC kickoff dinner with our visiting committee. So you got, you have a little bit of an overview, but also for our listeners and viewers at home and in the audience, Ms. Neelis is going to kind of talk about what the process was and the successes of it. And I just want to say on a personal note how incredibly grateful I am to Barbara for her leadership in this. It really is an important thing to have a teacher leader step up and into this role, and she made this process for our staff so easy over this last two years. And so she's going to kind of talk about it. But again, Ms. Neelis, thank you so much for everything that you've done.
Give me a second. I don't have the presentation in front of me. Okay, well, hi, I'm Barbara. You have, I think, the handouts of the actual presentation. Oh, here we go. What I, we got it, we got it. Thank you. Okay, there we go. So again, I'm Barbara Neelis, and I was the WASC coordinator. And I do want to start just by thanking all of you for coming to the opening evening for our WASC visit. And I just wanted to give you kind of an overview of what the visit was like and what we learned and the celebrations that the team gave to us, and give you a little background on the process, just to make sure everyone understands it. WASC stands for the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, and just an FYI, all high schools are required to be accredited. So this is a super important, kind of behind-the-scenes, almost like a restaurant has to get a grade or a hospital, schools are required to do that as well. It's a two-year process. In the first year, the whole staff engages in a self-reflection, and then in the second year, we finalize a written report, which we submit to WASC, and then we host the visit. And so that's what happened this year. Keep going. So our visit happened between February 23rd and the 26th. A group of professional educators from across California came and visited our campus, evaluated our programs, spent three days visiting classrooms, meeting with staff and students, and taking a look at all of our programs. And with this, they were able to confirm our report, celebrate our successes, and give us some advice about continued growth, which is what the visiting teams, really their task is, to make sure that what we say in the report is accurate, celebrate the things that they see are great, and then also give us some advice moving forward. So I've personally been involved with WASC for over 20 years, both as a person on campus, as a member of one of the smaller groups on campus, and then taking on the role as coordinator. I also go off to other schools and do visits. I'm actually going to one tomorrow where I am meeting with all of their people and verifying everything that they've done. I do need to say, and I'm not saying this lightly, I've rarely been involved in a visit that was as positive as ours was. The team that came truly enjoyed their time on campus, and I think that had a lot to do with all of our strengths as a community and with the whole staff on our campus, along with the team. The team that came to visit was amazing as well. So I just wanted to let you know that it was really positive process for all of us involved. So they leave us always with areas of strength and then areas of growth, advice for moving forward. I wanted just to share those with you. They noted a strong commitment to academic excellence and college readiness, as we saw with our counseling team and our teachers as well, comprehensive student support services for social-emotional well-being, integration of technology into teaching and learning, which is so nice to see them celebrating because post-COVID, that was a big lift for all of us, and so it's nice to see that celebrated, a commitment to equity and access for all students, structured professional development and collaborative teacher teams, resources and facilities, clean and safe campus. They were especially impressed with the command center. And then the community-family atmosphere at the school. Those were the things they celebrated for us. Their job is to also give us advice as to how to move forward. As any organization knows, we need things to work on. So they would like us to continue enhancing student engagement and school culture, improving attendance and addressing chronic absenteeism, refining PLCs and data-driven instructional practices, and PLCs are professional learning communities, which we are working on developing, expanding differentiated instruction in the 95-minute block period, strengthening communication on course selection and academic pathways, increasing access and support for underrepresented student groups and advanced coursework, and further refining the master schedule and pathway choices to support all students as much as possible. Looking forward, the WASC governing board meets in April to review all the January, February, and March visits, inclusive of ours. Then in May, they'll send us our accreditation status, and we'll share that news with you when we receive the official letter, which will probably be, as I said, later in May. And that's kind of two years in a nutshell. It seems odd to have all the work just done in a little slideshow, but that was it. That was us.
Thank you very much. That was very encouraging and very wonderful, and I'm going to go to the board and let them see if they have a comment or two.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I guess I have a question, just what have we typically gotten in the past, and what are we expecting to get from the inspection we had this time?
My educated guess? Most, in the past, we've typically gotten a six-year accreditation with a mid-cycle revisit, and that usually happens in the third year. And it's either a one- or a two-day revisit. Our last one was six years with a one-day revisit, I think, is what it was, and that's fairly typical. I would be surprised if we got anything different than that.
Mrs. Manicherry.
Don't quote me on that.
Hi, thank you for joining us. A big thank you to you for your time and care and everybody who put time and care into it. I just was curious to know, with regard to the areas of growth, do they actually dig in and give any specific examples? Just because I think I understand what these mean, but in practice, it could pencil out in a lot of different ways. So is there like a communication that happens so you can understand, for example, further refining the master schedule and pathway choices? Are they talking about giving the athletic students more options? Is it the zero period? Like, that could mean so many different things. Do they, you know, give any details?
They give some. The general instruction given to the visiting team, as I will have when I go tomorrow, is anytime you give a suggestion or an area of growth, you're supposed to include who would be responsible for it, the what it is, which is kind of synopscized for you in the presentation, and then the why piece. And what will happen is the school sites themselves will then see how that speaks best to them. So in this one, it was, it was about, do you want to speak to it? Okay.
So there was a few different things in terms of the master schedule piece and the pathway piece. They were incredibly impressed with the amount of offering that we have. And it's one of the things that we always grapple with, that our school counselors do in scheduling, that we do when we are building a master schedule for the courses that we're going to offer, and that, you spoke a little bit to it in terms of it's really trying to pinpoint and find the ways that we can maximize where our courses are placed, and so that our students can have the most available options to them in a school that, where it can be a challenge like ours, where we have so many singletons, like we have an overabundance of pathways, which is awesome. But sometimes it means that students have to make decisions. Am I going to be a five, AP person, robotics orchestra, and an athlete? That's going to be really hard to do. And so, but within that context, understanding that there are some kids that may, maybe just want to do too many things, and it's truly not going to be possible, but continuing to find ways that we can maximize our schedules so that students can be engaged in as many sort of pathways and endeavors as possible, if that makes sense. And so now it's up to us to decide with that information how we're going to continue to tinker and refine it so that we open as many opportunities for our kids.
I'm glad they provide you some, some instruction.
So their report is much more detailed than what?
Than this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so Judy took my questions. I love that. And I wanted to know, like, exactly what, you know, piggybacking on what Judy said, Mrs. Manicherry, is when they, when they visit, how do they know exactly in three days what the issues are in enhancing student engagement, improving attendance? I mean, I'm assuming they look at all our records, they go through everything, and are they, who are they speaking to? Are they speaking to the counselors or the teachers?
They speak to everyone, really. It's
And the students?
And the students, and parents, and teachers, and counselors, and administrators, district office personnel were also part of the process. There is also a full report that we write, and in that report, we also glean from what we've written what we believe our strengths are and what we believe our areas of growth are. And so a lot of what they've included are the things we self-identified as well.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense.
So a lot of it comes from us, and they're just verifying, yes, we do need to enhance school culture or whatever it might be.
Okay, thank you.
One of the areas where we get nervous is if our areas of self-identified need are different from theirs. Like, if we're like, these are the areas of growth that we have, and they come in, they're like, no. they're like, no, 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 you, like, you need to work on these things. So the good news is, we were relatively, yeah, we were very aligned with what we self-identified as areas of growth. They mostly corroborated it. And again, in talking to all those people, but as Ms. Neelis said, based on the data that we provided in our self-study, which is, you know, 50-plus pages.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, because I'm looking at everything and I'm like, yes, yes, yes. And how do they know all these things in three days? So that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
That is true.
Just thank you, nothing to add.
Thank you.
I, of course, want to congratulate you and look forward to the final report, which will be coming, as you mentioned, in May. I would like to ask a question. They say the areas of strength noted by the visiting team. And then they say areas of strength, but just continue. And then they say areas of growth as noted by the visiting team. Are they comparing this to what there was before in the previous? Or are these just showing you and sharing with you that these are areas of growth, or these may be areas where you need growth? I'm not sure if what the-
They're not comparing to past reports. They're focusing on what we reported and then what we, they saw when they were here. So it's really real time that they're seeing. And so they can look at past reports. They absolutely have access to all of those, the one three years ago and then the one six years, or three years before that. But they're really focusing on what they saw and then what we also presented in the report.
Okay, because it says like, areas of growth as noted, but growth from when? And that's why I was questioning that particular statement, because it says like, enhancing student engagement and school culture. You are, that's an area of growth, but from when? I mean, that's what I wondered.
Yeah, so it's what they want to see from us for, as we continue to, and then work on submitting our report the next time.
Going forward.
And also, it's, so that mid-year review, that sort of like that three-year check-in that Ms. Neelis was talking about earlier that we had three years ago, it's at those midpoint times. So if they give us a six-year accreditation, let's say, and they say, we're going to come back in three years for a midterm review for one day, in that one day, they want to check on our progress. So that growth that they're recommending, they're going to look then. And one of the things that I'll say, even though they don't necessarily compare, one of the main, one of the biggest areas of identified growth from our self-study visit six years ago was about technology in the classroom, in educational technology.
I remember that.
And the fact that that now is an area of strength means that, you know, we took it seriously and worked at that, you know, COVID certainly helped as well, you know, necessity is the mother of invention. But, so that was nice to see that some of our previous areas of need are now areas of strength. So that's part of the goal of the process.
I remember when I was here six years, or when you did it before, and I remember that that particular item was noted that needing to improve or lack of. So I really am very impressed that you keep it going forward, and congratulations. And I look forward to the best.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. And I will now, what's up? Dr. Seaman?
Yes.
Yeah.
We should do one.
Okay, okay. That's fine. Okay. Let me, can I have one second to double-check? I see at least one of them. I actually think we have a pretty good number. If, yeah, it's not all, but I don't know that we were going to get all, so we have a pretty good number. So if you're okay with it, we'll move forward and recognize them. Awesome. Could we have our Skills USA students please come up? Awesome. Yes, it looks like it. Perfect. Okay, so I know that we don't have everybody, but we have a lot. So students, thank you all for being here. Board of Education, it is my pleasure to introduce some of the best and brightest that our school has to offer, and in particular, for their performance at the Skills USA regional competition, and these students will be advancing to state. So I'm going to kind of explain a little bit about what that is, and then we have some certificates for them. And then we also, of course, want to hear from you all and any thoughts that you may have. So our Beverly Hills High School students demonstrated career readiness, technical expertise, and professional excellence at the Skills USA regional competition. They've earned top honors across multiple categories, competing against students from across the region. They participated gaining real-world experience in their chosen career fields, which we're going to kind of talk about which those different fields were in just a second. And it further reinforced BHHS's commitment to equipping students with the skills needed for future success. Skills USA is a national organization dedicated to preparing our students for the workforce through leadership training, technical skill development, and hands-on competitions. By participating in this event, BHHS students had the opportunity to apply their knowledge, refine their craft, and compete at a high level in fields ranging from media production to culinary arts and customer service. And on a personal note, you see a lot of these students working to run these board meetings, and you can probably tell that they already have a lot of that real-world technical skill, that they can just walk straight into any industry and do incredibly well. And so with that, they showed that very much at our Skills USA competition. So our competition results, we had a couple of gold medalists in audio production. I don't see them, but I do want to shout out Alex Erwin and Dara Momeni for their performance in audio production. And for, we got a silver medal for video news production, and I do see many of these folks, Perry Galardian. It's going to be in there for sure. Yep, she'll be there, too. There we go. Perry Galardian. Nora Nikfarjan. Is Jason here, guys? I don't see him. Jason is not here. And Aaron Gabayan. And again, that was for video news production. We have the bronze medalists for baking and pastry arts, so a little bit different pathway. We have Hazel Nahore. Is she here? All right. Customer service, we had Rubens Romanga Daoud. Is Rubens here? Nope. And then also in video news production, we had Zachary Hassan. Sophia Saidian. Is Noam here? Noam Albu, who is not here, but is often here. And Chloe Emrani. Nope, here's Chloe. Sorry. All right. Additional competitors in video news production, we had Deborah Cohen. Gunner Walmsley. I assume Josh is not here either. Albu? No. And Sophia Nalmondian. Sophia's not here? Okay. And then we also have Leora Nadavud. Mika Bachar. San Vija. And Teja Wolf. And then we also, and we may not have a certificate, but we will make that right. We also, in our culinary pathway qualifying for state, we have, in the science of brining, in job demonstration, we have Leora Boramond. Excellent. So our students have now qualified, these outstanding students will now advance to the state competition, where they will compete against top talent from across California. We are so proud of their accomplishment and look forward to supporting them as they take on their next challenge. Their dedication, skill, and passion exemplify the excellence and perseverance that define our Norman students, and we are incredibly excited to cheer you guys on every step of the way. Thank you for representing our school so well. We are incredibly proud of you. All right.
Can we join up here? Can we do it up here? Right here. So we now have this nice background right here.
So we're going this way, guys. All right. We're here coming this way. So that way, this is all, we're covering up.
Do you want us to hold these or?
Yeah, I think open them.
Open them.
Yeah, if you guys want to line up here in front.
How about it? Hey, Perry. Hi, guys. Come on in.
Come over here. Spread on out. Mr. Stewart, you go in the middle.
Where's that mic? I'm going to go ahead. You can still see me. Get my shoulders.
Yeah. Keep coming, keep going, keep going.
Mrs. Marcus, you coming in?
You want to come in the front?
Mrs. Marcus, you go in the front. Mr. Boggs, you in the front. Board in the front, board in the front.
Sorry. Come on in.
Everybody, right here. Show your certificates. And three, two, one, smile. There. Three, two, one, smile. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, both of you. You guys are so much.
Good job.
Did you guys want to say anything today, Mr. Marcus?
Well, they're already gone.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations to all of you. And we have now arrived at the public comment, and I don't think there'll be a problem this evening with time limits. So every speaker will have three minutes, although I do see a seating of time for one, but that's the only one. All right, so I'm going to call to the dais, Robbie Curtis. Robbie Curtis, please.
A good evening, Mrs. Marcus, school board members, and acting superintendent Hasty. Just like Al Pacino said in The Godfather, "Just when I thought I was out, they pull me back in." But some issues are worth being pulled back in for, and tonight is one of those times. So I'm back because, in my opinion, this district is at a pivotal moment, not just for our students and schools, but for the very heart of our community. Last meeting, Jackie Kruger served board members Russell Stewart and Sagali Sabog, with papers stating an intent to recall them. It's my understanding that despite a slight hiccup, it's still moving forward, and for all I know, they may be served again this evening. However, while accountability is essential, timing matters. Look at Los Angeles, where fierce political rivals have publicly opposed recalls, recognizing their destructive potential. Recalls are meant to correct corruption and incompetence, not settle political scores, personal grudges, or hurt feelings. This board is navigating substantial changes and is tasked with immense responsibilities that demand our unified attention. A recall now will not restore trust. It will fracture it further. Instead of sharpening our focus on student success and educational excellence, if this recall petition is successful, the BHUSD risks squandering $1 million in unnecessary election costs. That's money directly robbed from our classrooms, teachers, and children's futures. Social media and Beverly Hills versions of Bridgerton's Lady Whistledown have turned this issue into a spectacle, unfortunately encouraged by a former board member with questionable motives, who's chiming in with bitterness from eight states away. And to add to that, a handful of vocal parents unhappy with Mr. Stewart's social media posts or Ms. Sabog's outreach strategies on the board's behalf. These are legitimate disagreements, but are they grounds for recall? Hardly. Ms. Sabog and Mr. Stewart had barely unpacked their boxes following their installation in December, before being forced to deal with investigations, administrative leaves, lawsuits, angry parents and students, distractions our district does not need. As my old friend Rick Caruso wisely said while speaking out against a recall for LA Mayor Karen Bass, "Now isn't the time to tear ourselves apart. It's the moment to unite, stabilize our leadership, and recommit ourselves to returning Beverly Hills schools to excellence, the excellence that brought families here in the first place." A recall now is not democracy in action, it's division at a very steep price. Let's be wise, not reckless. Let's choose unity over division. I ask those, last sentence. I ask those behind this recall to choose our children's futures over costly, unnecessary battles and make your feelings known at the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Wolfe is here. Jennifer Wolfe, okay, you are supposedly ceding time to Robert Myers. Has that been changed?
I think it's been changed because he's not here, but I have a compliment. I have a compliment to give, so.
Okay, you have a comment. Comment or compliment?
Compliment to give, because I think it's warranted. Thank you all for having me tonight, even though I ceded my time, but my person's not here. So I just saw a wonderful post on LinkedIn from Dr. Hasty, so I just wanted to read it out loud. It says, "Instructional leadership is about creating the conditions for a great teaching to thrive. Today I saw in action a PD, I think Professional Development Library, filled with targeted teaching resources, a PD word wall anchoring shared instructional language, and clearly posted PLC norms by grade level. What a model for teachers. We must model for students." So just thank you for recognizing that at El Rodeo and the admin there working so hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Myers, I assume is not here then. Zahira Lomadi. Did I say the name correctly? I guess she's not here this evening. Good evening, Dawn.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me. I'm here tonight to speak about the superintendent search. I do want to note that there was a BHUSD Superintendent Search Community Feedback Survey released on Wednesday, March 19. Beg your pardon. I'm here to speak about the superintendent search. I do want to note that there was a BHUSD Superintendent Search Community Feedback Survey released on Wednesday, March 19. While we appreciate the gesture toward community input, we have important questions. Who created the survey and how will responses be used? What is the recruitment and hiring plan and who is driving it? Will stakeholders, including parents, teachers, and students, be meaningfully involved in the process, or will this be a closed-door board decision? We would like the board to know, as active and concerned parents, residents, and educators, we will continue monitoring and requesting full transparency around this critical process. We want to ensure that the broader community will have a meaningful chance to engage and participate in respectful dialogue with the district as it makes this critical determination, so that we will have confidence that the person chosen for this key leadership position is someone of unquestionable integrity. That they will be an advocate and be uncompromising in their mission to seek excellence, both academic and non-academic, for our children. That they will ensure our public schools will continue to reflect and service the diverse needs, voices, and values of all Beverly Hills residents. We do not think a single survey serves as meaningful engagement or sets the district up for success in enabling these outcomes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Kruger, please.
Good evening, school board members. I wanted to take a moment to follow up on my previous comments in the past meetings. First, let me express my appreciation to those of you who have spent, have met with me or spoken with others in our community about our concerns. This was a positive step towards, step towards- We would like the board to know as active and concerned parents, residents, and educators, we will continue monitoring and requesting full transparency around this critical process. We want to ensure that the broader community will have a meaningful chance to engage and participate in respectful dialogue with the district as it makes this critical determination, so that we will have confidence that the person chosen for this key leadership position is someone of unquestionable integrity. That they will be an advocate and be uncompromising in their mission to seek excellence, both academic and non-academic for our children. That they will ensure our public schools will continue to reflect and service the diverse needs, voices, and values of all Beverly Hills residents. We do not think a single survey serves as meaningful engagement or sets the district up for success in enabling these outcomes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Kruger, please.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, school board members. I wanted to take a moment to follow up on my previous comments in the past meetings. First, let me express my appreciation to those of you who have spent, have met with me or spoken with others in our community about our concerns. This was a positive step towards, step towards what we have as a community been advocating for. Transparent governance and authentic community engagement. I was also pleased to see that the district sent out a survey regarding the superintendent search. I'd request that you please share the results of the survey with the community. In addition, please share details on how it was sent out, how many people it was sent to, and how many responded. And please include whether it was sent just to parents or whose children currently attend the schools, whether it was sent out to the entire community, since every resident has an interest in the success of our schools. It is my understanding that the past, that in the past, a committee composed of board members, parents, BHUSD staff, and community members at large was involved in the selection process of previous superintendents and school principals. Will this be the plan again? If so, when and how do you intend to start the process of collecting nominations or requests to be part of these search committees? Finally, I wanna go on the record regarding the potential recall effort. We have been talking to members of the community about what we want to see from our schools and our school board members and how we can achieve these goals. Many people have shared with us that they want greater transparencies and openness, a nonpartisan cooperative and inclusive approach to addressing issues, and a strategic plan that will bring BHUSD back as one of the top districts in the state. If the meeting and survey are just the first steps toward greater transparency, inclusiveness, and committing to listening and working on behalf of the entire community, then there will be no need for recall. We hope that that is the case. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Moving on, I would like to call for a motion to approve the consent calendar minus E, F, G, and H. Are there any others that need to be called? Hearing none, I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus E, F, G, and H. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Manicherry. Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions or nay? Hearing none, it is passed. Number E. I will move for the approval of standard agreement with the Department of General Service Offices of Administrative Hearing.
Oh, no.
No, that's app, I'm sorry. Approval of the agreement with Avidex. An RFP number 2425-021. An RFP number 2425-022. Do I have a second?
Your mic's off.
Your mic's off. This is.
Your mic is off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, uh, first by Mrs. Marcus and second by Mrs. Manicherry. Who asked to have this pulled?
I did.
Can you?
Can we go a little bit slower? Because what do you?
We're on E.
Uh, we've approved the rest already. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Is Mr. Karat joining us?
E is approval of agreement with Avidex. The RFP number 2425.
Or Dr. Hasty.
This'll be me.
Oh, great, sorry.
He can, he can answer questions. She's really smart.
Yeah, I have some questions about it.
Thank you so much. I, I pulled this one because, um, as far as I know, we've been discussing the technology upgrade to the auditorium for both Horace Mann and Beverly Vista since I got on the board. So now it's, you're nodding, yes. It's been happening for, it's been in the works. And we, in the past, um, either did not get bids or we got bids that we were not happy with. And so I just wanted to, um, I wonder, notwithstanding that maybe these are the only bids we got, or how many did we get? You know, were these dollars budgeted for? What funds did they come out of? What can you share with us, Dr. Hasty?
Great question. Uh, these were, first of all, this was in our strategic plan for 2425, or, yeah, 2425. And, um, I believe when I first came in in September, it was something that we were working on. I was not happy with the original bid for Horace Mann, which was 568,000. And on top of that, I did find out at that time that they were not budgeted for. So, um, what I did is said, let's go back to the drawing board. Let's get them both done the right way. We did an RFP, we flew them, and then we also put it in the budgets so we can do this work this summer and in the new school year for July. And so now that it is actually budgeted, um, we did the RFP, and we only had, Avidex was the only one we submit, we had submit for this. So I do think, um, obviously, we, there is a need for it, for sure. But it is budgeted, and we did follow the right procurement procedures to make sure we got the right bids.
And, thank you. I just wanna note in your reference to, excuse me, strategic plan. I think that we, we covered just the academic strategic plan Q3 report, and I would welcome, um, a time when the rest of the cabinet can come back so we can review the rest of the Q3 reports, please.
Definitely.
Thank you.
And we said we would do that, so.
Thank you so much. I know it's been a busy couple of weeks.
And, and let her.
Theater, E?
Huh?
Are we talking about E?
E, yes.
Okay, so in regards to E, um, with the approval of Horace Mann and Beverly Vista for the theater. Horace Mann was, the theater was remodeled not too long ago. Do you know exactly when?
Um, I don't have the year, but I think Ken or Will, do you know the year? 2017? I, I wanna say the sound was never at the level it should have been. And on top of that, it, it could have been a victim of valued engineering at the time, from what I understand, which wasn't at the level.
So, so again, we have different proposals for, um, the theater, for the, um, media?
For the sound.
Correct.
For the sound, do we have different proposals?
What do you mean?
Because again, it's, it's.
We had one company, we, we did the RFP for both, and we only had one company that put a bid in for these. And this is the second time we've done this, yeah.
Do we know how they had a, how that compares to the one that was done?
The one prior was only for Horace Mann for 500, and we got a bid, and it was only one bid at the time for that as well. And it was 568,000, so this is coming in lower.
This one is coming in at less?
Yeah, 500 and, um, yeah, 39. So the one we added that we did not take to RFP was the Beverly, uh, the middle school.
Beverly Vista?
Yeah.
Is there any way to see the details? Mr. Seaman, do you have the details of, um, the, um, report of what it needs to be fixed? Like, what needs to be fixed exactly, and how much is each?
Are you, there, there, so what's in there is in the scope? And so I shared that with the board. There is a scope of the work that they're gonna be doing. And that was based off the assessment. We did meetings, we had them come out and tour the location. And, uh, yeah, based on what they saw, they put the scope together. And of course, it aligns with the RFP as well.
I can speak on program issues. Over the last couple of years, we have been renting both microphones, speakers. Some of, like, BVMS is utilizing a floppy disk for the sound system. When was the last time we saw a floppy disk? You know, so we, we've been spending a lot of money between Prop 28 and, um, I don't remember the other funds.
Defer maintenance or?
Yeah, defer maintenance, to be able to host both high school and middle school events at both BVMS and Horace Mann over the last three years.
I think I know where Mrs. Sabog is going on this. Do you know if, like, for example, Fonder Solari glanced at this and, based on their experience? Or Will, did you, have you?
I'm gonna say, well, maybe I'll speak for him, but I'm typically.
We just wanna have some context for it.
Typically, I would not have our bond program funded. People do something that's not gonna come out of the money.
Yeah, or Ken, or Will. We just, I just think that because there's, um, we had a prior bid, which was only for one of the facilities. And so I acknowledge that this one is coming out, um, lower than that one.
Yep.
By a good 5%. But nonetheless, it's a, there's no context for it, so it becomes a challenge. And so I, I acknowledge, I've been in both theaters, and I know that they just don't sound good, is, you know, the layman's way of saying it. I think it's just a lot of money. It's, you know, almost, it's about a million dollars between the two of them, yeah. So, uh, Mr. Karat, do you have anything to add?
So, I, I have a problem with not seeing proposals. So one proposal doesn't cut it for me, because there's no way we can find another company to give us another proposal. It's very difficult. And for any details of what is broken, like what, um, Mr., Dr. Seaman said, can we see that? Can we review that? What, you know, what are the details? What are they fixing? What is destroyed? And what are the prices for everything? I think we have a right to see the details if it's, um, a million dollars going on two schools, over a million. So we have the right to see it, even if it's one proposal. And we have a right to, um, visit other companies to show us other proposals and not be desperate.
Can, can I chime in here a little bit? I remember the first time we got the proposal, and it was very expensive. And we chose not to move forward at the time, as I recall. And, uh, we said that we would go out and do another, uh, RFP for the auditoriums again. And now they come in at practically identical figures, as far as I'm concerned. The fact that we only got one proposal is unfortunate. If only one company wants to work on it, and it's close in price to the other one, I don't know if there's gonna be anybody that's gonna come in and do a proposal at this rate. So I'm just cautioning you about if, if it, if it's not, if it's not necessary to do it right now, if we were to delay this, if it's not required right, it's not an immediate thing, if we could go out and do it again and see if there's. But I know that we've had this out, if this isn't the, the second or third time that it's been done, and we just don't get much satisfac, either there's something that we don't know that needs to be done that is really very substantial, or that it's there, we need to see if there are other companies. I don't know what it is, but I, at this point, would be willing, if it's not an immediacy, to see if we can go back and, uh, search for other companies with another RFP with exactly specifications. I don't know.
The, the challenge too, and I'll let Will talk about assessment previously done. The challenge too is timing now, to get this locked in now so we can have the theaters ready for the opening of school. And so a lot of things like this will happen at this time of year. But anyway, do you have any information you wanna share with?
Uh, no, except that I do agree with almost everything you've said. Normally, we like to have at least three bids when we're going out for a project this size. This wasn't a bond-funded project, so I wasn't, I didn't really have much to do with it. But I'd be happy to help if we do wanna revisit this and, uh, review the, the scope of work.
Has Mr. Fonder or Solari had any part in this at all?
No, not.
And, okay, and I'd like to know, how do we get the bids?
So, so, go ahead, yeah. Which upon that. So I actually agree with, uh, Ms. Sabog. I think one of the things that, just moving forward in general, and I hope that you would, um, agree with me on this. As new board members, I mean, obviously, you're talking about this has been going on for years and years and years. But as brand-new board members, when I look at this, you know, I'm a pretty tech-savvy guy. The very first thing that I'm seeing is a, you know, legal agreement to do work, but to do what work? And if you guys, on your end, if you already have the spec sheets of what's gonna happen, I think just including that in this document, so when I open it up, I go, oh, 584,000, blah, 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 for, and here's the spec sheet of exactly what's gonna be installed, gives us a different picture than simply a, you know, you know, an agreement to do the work without knowing what the actual, you know, gear is. Not to say that anyone on this panel, including myself, would know each one of the pieces of gear was, but at least from the optics standpoint, it looks like we're agreeing to money without quite understanding what is going in. So that is what I would like to see going forward. But, but, but also too, um, I know of plenty of companies in Los Angeles who do this kind of work. And I don't know this one particular firm, but to believe that for a half a million dollar job, or, you know, a million dollar job, that there's no one else who's interested in doing the work is, I find that almost impossible to believe, especially when it's, um, you know, staging, sound systems, um, which there, I mean, this is Hollywood. There's, you know, 300 companies that do that kind of work. So I'm a little surprised that there'd be no one else who'd be interested, uh, in doing it. So, um, again, I don't wanna, um, hold up anything, because obviously, these schools need these upgrades. And I would definitely be willing to move forward now, but I think definitely for the future on other things, Sagali and I are, you know, lockstep in that, that we wanna see where the money is going. And, uh, I think that some kind of a breakdown, um, when it comes to approving, especially, you know, a million dollars is a million dollars. And I'd like to see, uh, you know, a list of exactly what the gear is that is going in. And I'm willing to move forward, but I would still like to get that document. And, and I'd like the entire board to get that document of exactly what equipment makes up this contract.
Russell, I, I felt very similarly, and, um, Dr. Hasty, uh, very, when I asked, he did put on the question and answer, um, Microsoft Word document, an interactive folder. So I, I didn't get a chance to quite look at it, but it is there, and I was, I wanna parse through it. But for, for the, in the interim, you could certainly go there if you wanted, to the question and answer document, and you can find it. But yeah, I mean, I had the same thought for over a million dollars. I mean, I'd like to know the context. And, um, it does, it does list some of the deliverables, but I'd also like to know, like, at what point? What are the checkout points? Like, who's gonna go and verify that, yep, this was done? Check it off, check it off, because, you know, it's obviously not one of us, but that, that would be an important thing. It's a one-year warranty, which seems to me it should be longer, but I, I don't know how those terms work exactly.
Well, you know, and other companies, you know, work with different vendors, so you don't know what, you know, brand that they're going with, and, and, you know, maybe they are getting a deal on something that might not be the best fit for us, or might not work with other things that we wanna upgrade, uh, in the future. So I just think that just, you know, having a document of this nature is fine, but just having that, that other attachment that just shows the breakdown of exactly what we're getting. I mean, someone has to have it somewhere, and they had to show it.
And usually, there is an exhibit. I'm actually surprised that this one doesn't include the.
That's what I was just gonna say. I just looked at it on my computer.
It's probably consistent in the RFP.
And usually, they itemize it. They usually itemize, and how many of this you need, and how much each is gonna cost, and what they saw, and the labor, and this just lists a bunch of words that absolutely mean nothing. So, I mean, I don't know whether that would be something to consider. But, for example, uh, a payment bond, a bid bond, uh, introductions to bidders. I mean, these are all just words, and we're paying 500 and some odd thousand dollars for this one contract. So I, I agree that, and that's why I asked, if we were not to pass this tonight, would it be that much of a difficulty to put this out for bid again? And maybe use by Fonder and Solari, maybe, I don't know.
Let me, I wanna jump in, because, because I, I plan. I think it's a great idea. We table it, and I'm good with that, bringing it back, because I, everything you're saying, I wanna 100% acknowledge. And we can do stuff and put things in place to support what you're wanting.
So, can I just say something really, really important? Our last board meeting, I specifically was saying that we need to change things, right? And I also spoke to you about that in between. We must have details. We must know exactly what everything costs. For instance, what Dr. Seaman said, is, what did you say, that chip, mic, whatever? The floppy disk, okay. Replace floppy disk, cost $100,000, whatever it is. We need to see the details on everything. So, um, before we receive even the purchase orders, as I was saying to Dr. Hasty, we need to see details of estimates and proposals, and approve which proposals we're gonna decide to go with. And once we approve the proposal, then we can approve the work. We can't, you know, just approve everything blindly. Everything is blind, and it's just numbers, and like Mrs. Marcus said, there are absolutely no details. Now, not only do I want details, I want every single line to have a price. And this is not something out of the ordinary. This is what people do every day. You know, they only do it to people who don't understand and, and don't know what they're, um, you know, approving or paying for. So every single detail, even if it says bid bond, what does that mean? How much is that? What do you charge for that? What are your services? You know, hourly? What, whatever it is. So please, let's start doing that, even though we never did that before. Let's start doing that.
I will make a mo, I'm gonna, uh, recall my, withdraw my motion, and I will ask Mrs. Manicherry if she will withdraw her motion.
I withdraw my second, and thank you in advance.
And I wanna make a comment on the direction I'm hearing from the board, so I'm really clear moving forward. When we take bids, um, so here's a couple of things. We had one, the, the practice up to this point has been that we put, and again, outside bond, so don't, Will had no part in this. I wanna make sure this was our internal, the way this is happening with general funds. Typically, we would post an RFP on the website. We have a website where it's there, we put it for 10 days. Now, was that good enough? I, I'm gonna say we probably collectively agree, no, because we got one bid. I've seen other strategies where we would post. I've seen other strategies where we would post it, but we also send it out to prospective people. And again, I can't confirm or deny right now whether that actually happened. I'm going to say we got one, maybe it didn't. So, we can do something like that. We'll take strategy, we'll put it on the website, we'll also send out to prospective people that would be interested. Because maybe they're not looking at our website to even know. The other thing too, is when you, when we bring back an RFP decision, you will see the complete scope of the actual proposed contract from the vendor that will be within the board item. And also, it'll have some rationale and talk about how many bidders there were and what was the process. So, we'll really articulate that. That's what I'm hearing. Okay. And that's what we've done before, I've done before. It's just, you know, we're changing things here.
Also, please be reminded that we are in construction for our Performing Arts Wing. And so, maybe we even want to send it out to the subcontractor who's doing the theater there.
It's the same one.
Oh, it's Avidex? It's Avidex.
They did our day also.
They need to sharpen their pencil a little more.
Well, they did, but we would like to see more bids.
Yes. Can you, can you put the dollars aside regardless?
We have.
Detailed, because it seems like, you know, they're already in with our school. They're already working with our school. So, they're kind of like, you know, it's like a spoiled child. It's like, I don't need to work harder to show you anything else. So, please, we want to see. We want to, you know, have our eyes worked.
Thank you. I will make a motion for the approval of a standard agreement with the Department of General Service Office of Administrative Hearings. I will make a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Stern.
Do you want me to explain this a little bit before we ask questions? Okay. So, anytime a district is going to reduce a position to a staff member who has rights to a represented position such as OTBS, and that's what the case is in this. Not only do we send a letter that we are reducing the position, but we also have to send them notice that they have rights to a hearing. Because they, we had some staff members that had rights to positions because of their seniority. And so, since they were in an old position, they had seniority rights. So, when we sent that letter, we told them they had rights to a hearing. So, due to timing, we did have to bring this OAH contract. Because this is just by labor law for California. We have to do it because we're representative members. Friday was the deadline for them to let us know they had a hearing. They didn't, they didn't, they don't want a hearing. Now, here's my suggestion with this one. It's a no cost at this point, and it wouldn't be a cost unless we enacted it. We can just leave it as is. I can have an executed contract in case we do something next year. This could stand up until next year. But it's really, it's indifferent at this point. But I had to have it on the agenda just in case, as of.
So, should, we could just withdraw and move on if you want to do it that way?
No, I'd rather, I think we need to leave it here.
You can vote and prove it, and it's not going to be a cost to us.
There's no cost.
So, then I just had one question, which was, how is the forty-eight thousand determined to be the appropriate maximum amount?
That's a good one. I, that's their cost for their services.
Oh, that's what they require.
Yeah, remember, they bring in someone who's going to do the mediation, all those pieces.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, it passes five and oh, thank you. The next item that has been with, we need to get an approval of the conferences and workshops number one. And I know that there's.
Yeah, and I want to front-load this one a little bit too.
Okay, I'm not going to, I'm not going to second it because I have some issues with it. So, if somebody else wants to second it, that's okay, and I'm happy to discuss it.
Okay.
I made the motion for the approval. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you.
So, this is new, what we're doing. And again, to support transparency as a district, I think I talked about this at the last meeting as to what we're going to be doing. And this is a standard practice in many other districts. So, this is getting it out in the open as to what conferences staff are attending. Some of these, I'll tell you right now, some of, they went through a process to get to this point. We have a routing form, which is called the conference request form. When a staff member, they want to go to a conference, they would start this routing through our program called Inform K-12. We have a routing process where they would sign off, initiate, and look at the cost. And then, it would go to their supervisor and/or principal, and then all the way, whether it's Ed Services or Ms. Collins Williams and Student Services, or me, where I would then sign, and then it goes to myself, the CBO, to sign. So, these all went through that process and were routed, you know, at a very high level. And so, what you're seeing here have been approved. And one thing in that conference request form is if it was budget-approved as well. And I made sure, this was a revision when I first came on board, because we didn't, you know, we didn't have this level of clarity, if you will. So, now, these right now have been budgeted. They've been signed off by all staff, and now they're being recommended to you. The long-term vision on this is this is the mechanism to check. So, when you see the reimbursements on the backend, you can go back and say, oh, that's that conference. Now, I'll tell you right now, it's a ratify because sometimes conferences come up. These are only the ones over a thousand dollars. Because if we, you know, if we have a trip to Lakewood to do something and it's like twenty, thirty dollars mileage, it's not, you know, it's not going to be something you want to spend time figuring out. So, the other thing with this, so some might be a ratify, and that will be incumbent upon us to let you know. Because some of these might be already booked. And if we pull out now, like, we say we're not going to do it, there could be a charge, meaning we have to pay for it anyway. I'm just letting you know, I don't know which ones yet, but I'll let you start with the questions at that point.
As I know from being in the district for many years, that the travel and the conferences are always approved in the beginning. It should be approved in the beginning of the year. And that these are just the ones remaining for this year, which have already been approved. So, it's more like just to show people that this, going forward, this is something we're going to be doing in the future to make sure that this is the procedure and the process that we're going to use.
Correct. And I want to go back to that vision piece, as Ms. Marcus said. We would come in August. I won't say before that, but we would bring a conference plan as professional development as to who's going to what and when. And then, you could see that early on, along with things like field trips. So, we could also bring that to, so you guys have all that done. And what that lets us do is start the PO and the process. Go ahead.
So, many of the people that are supposed to be going to these conferences have already registered for them and have made the arrangements to go to them with subs and so-ons, right?
Yeah, and I'm actually going to back this up. We submitted a plan in 2021, which outlined the last five years. So, we actually do that every year by April. So, we not only bring to you, we bring all of our Ed Tech, everything out of Ed Services. We bring our professional development plan for the, this school year. So, there's nothing on the list that wasn't already discussed last April as where our professional development direction was aligned with our strategic plan. So, we do this every year. Where we're actually in the planning stages right now, working with our site-based administration, our cabinet and Education Services, to say, what is earmarked as restricted fund through Title II and our Educators Effectiveness Grant, which means that we cannot use those dollars for anything other than professional development for our teachers. And then, from there, what are our strategic plan goals and what are options there? So, an example on this document itself, I'd like to highlight are, through our WASC visit, we noticed that there's access, an open access for subpopulations for higher-level coursework. You'll see Roel Hinahosa is giving up his summertime for us as an example. So, thank you, if you're listening. To be able to go to the College Board Conference, to be able to learn strategies, to be able to better recruit students that might have been underperforming in the middle school, to be able to bring them up into advanced placement, placement into the high school. Another example is Jennifer Hegley, if you're listening, shout out. You know, we were one of the pilots for AP cybersecurity. You'll see, that's the last agenda item. For her to be able to be qualified to teach, again, she has to go to the College Board Conference over the summer. Again, a lot of these opportunities, our teachers are giving up summertime to be able to travel as a group, to be able to give that training. Avid will be one that you'll see coming up. We, as a team, are onboarding additional teachers because we're expanding the program to additional levels. So, you'll see that in that next plan. But we do provide direction on our professional development plan over the years to the Board of Education that is aligned with our strategic plan, just out of transparency.
Thank you. Mrs. Manicherry.
Yes. So, first of all, I just want to state that I am in favor of all different types of professional development, and I would like to support it. The reason why I had a little bit of heartburn in reviewing this is, and you mentioned, for example, some conferences are taking.
I can't hear you.
Some conferences are taking place in the summer. But, but to me, the way I was interpreting this document is that only the last one is taking place in the summer months. Am I, is that correct? So, everything up, everything up until the, so I thought what you were thinking too. So, everything up until the second to last is taking place during this school year. So, when is CASP?
At what location?
When is CASP at Beverly Vista and Beverly Hills High School? Well, the CASP equivalent.
Yeah. So, Beverly Hills starts in April. Roel Hinahosa is the person that's on the top. He's missing a Friday. That is the conference for the Open Access for AP. He's an AP teacher. He doesn't impact our CASP. He only teaches like 12th grade students.
Got you. Thank you so much. Because then, for example, so when is CASP for the high, for the middle school?
Well, we were actually meeting yesterday. We are toggling between trying to get it as close to our final exams. So, it's actually after that date for Jessica Loce.
Okay. So, exactly.
That program is our link program for the middle school as we transition and build up. So, when we take eighth-grade students, train them to welcome the fifth-grade students and do those first couple of days, she's going to be part of that team. And that's when that training's hosted.
Got you. So, then, as an example, Dr. Hasty, you mentioned that the site administrator has already reviewed and approved this. So, that means that for, I don't plan on calling out any specific teacher, but the one that you mentioned, who's teaching a variety of seventh-grade regular and honors math classes just before the testing period. So, site administration has identified an appropriate and adequate math substitute teacher to take that teacher's position for three days?
I would have to confirm.
Okay, so, that's where I'm going with it. You know what I'm saying? So, I 100% support our teachers bettering themselves, going out, learning, being inspired, refreshing, coming back and sharing that with their colleagues and with their students. But I'm very, very protective of instructional time. And so, if, do you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely, yeah.
Another one is, we've got a retiring individual who is engaging in professional development.
Wait, retiring?
Yes.
Yeah, they are presenting though, yeah.
They're presenting on that.
They're presenting. So, anytime, anytime a staff member, sometimes, the only time the professional development plan would deviate is if our staff is accepted to present nationally or at the state level. We'll cover that cost, and we always have covered that cost because they're representing Beverly Hills.
Got you. So, I'm, I'm okay, just so long as somebody can confirm that there will be a math teacher subbing for math class.
We'll follow up on that one for sure. And I just, the intent, the intent right now, we, we've built the mechanism, you know? And so, this is what we were hoping is to start these conversations that will help us really start keeping some.
So, then, we're taking it for granted going forward that site administration has seen this and approved of it?
You're taking it for granted? No, that's a fact.
No, I mean, like, every time this comes to us, we assume this one's we've got you. Thank you. That is a fact.
I'll send you the document if you ever want to just see what it looks like.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, so, thank you for, for doing this. I appreciate it, so we can see something. But I would like it more detailed. And I'd like to know, following with what Judy said, I don't want them to miss any instructional time. I want to make sure that the conferences are done whenever, you know, they can have it, you know, they can do it on their own time rather than during school times.
You guys, I'm going to jump in here. I'm going to get slightly frustrated in this conversation because this doesn't actually happen in a lot of school districts. These are restricted funds that we are utilizing to professional develop our teachers. We also are not, we are not in control of when these conferences are being provided or offered. So, yes, we will do our best to ensure that we are able to find a substitute teacher, which we have been working on as a group, to ensure that we have instruction happening in the classroom. However, we can't talk out of both sides of our mouths and say things like, we want to ensure that we increase our AP scores, yet we'll think about whether or not we're going to allow our teachers to go. Yet, we are sitting on a million dollars with a professional development fund only if it fits within a timeframe of June and July, when we are also asking our teachers to be able to take a break.
Understood. No, I think we're on the same page. We just were trying to understand.
Dr. Siemens, can I ask you? When they do the conferences, is it recommended for a certain instructor to do the conference? Or do they see the conferences and they say, I would like to take it?
No, this is all pre-planned by district administration, Ed Services, Student Services, Director's Levels, and Site-Based Administration.
So, for example?
We are approaching the teachers almost 100% of the time.
Oh, that makes a huge difference.
And I think, and that's a challenge. I mean, this is all connected to the PD plan that he was, that Dr. Siemens was talking about. So, I mean, again, now you're starting to see some of the granular of it. But again, back to where we're going to see, if we look at the top number of 1,051 dollars, when those reimbursements come down the line on the PO report, then you'll, you know, that's where that would be. So, they got approved here, and then we come back. Now, getting into more, you know, the balance, if you will, of, you know, instructional time, I get that. But I think that's a discussion we need to have when we're developing next year's plan and we're doing the professional development plan. Now, we have the mechanism, and you know what I mean?
Yeah, so, understood. I think, coming back to what Dr. Siemens said, I, obviously, we're not in control of when the conferences are taking place. So, importantly is who goes to the conferences? So, you decide, or the administration collectively decides, this certain instructor should go to that conference because we want them to do the AP class, for instance. And that will advance, you know, so we can open up that class or whatever it is. Is there any way to tell us when you plan those so that we know? Because, you know, to, this is a surprise to us. And this is the first that we're hearing about this because this is new.
They, I think that.
The way it's being shown, I should say.
They start to approve and look at conferences when they come out at this time of year. And they now sign up for them, and they go to the, depending on their money. And the administrator at the site decides how much or who was, like, if they went last year, they don't go next year. They try to space it out so everybody.
So, can we plan it specifically to make sure that there is an excellent instructor taking over the classroom? Because we already know the year in advance, right, that they're going to go.
Sometimes the instructor that goes may be the one that he needs it the most, and that would help them a lot. So, I, I don't, I mean, I know that as a teacher, I used to love to go to the, every time I'd come back, if I learned one thing at that conference, it was a success because I could apply it to the classroom right away. And that is what these conferences are all about, is what you come back with and what you put to work right away.
No, it's fantastic, but we do have a problem having our classrooms empty.
Well, you don't have a classroom empty, Mrs. Sabag. I disagree with you on that. Because every time I went, I made sure that I had a sub. I spoke with the sub. I left the plan. They knew what the plan.
That's what we need to do, 100%.
And that's what we expect these teachers to do. And that's what they do do. I know that for a fact. When our teachers go out on a, at a conference, they make, they know about it so far in advance that they make arrangements with the best teacher that they like right off the bat. If I was going to go next year in April, I, I got on the phone to Rhoda Bergman and say, Rhoda, I need to have you. And of course, she put it in her book, and she knew what I was going to do, and she just followed through.
So, is there any way we can implement that to make sure, like, maybe with the admin that is sending them?
Well, I think that that's a teacher, the teachers and the administration have to work that out. And I think that that's something that, we can keep an eye on that. But I, I'm being very honest. When a teacher knows three months, four months that they're going to go, they get on the phone with their sub, and many of them have preferred subs, as you know. And they say, I'm going to a conference in such and such a date, and I want to make sure you're going to be available on that date.
But are they penned in?
And they call it in already, and it's all set.
I had Ms. Hook was my favorite sub. Whenever I had to go do a conference, she was my go-to sub.
As long, because I've heard a lot of complaints, as you have as well.
But can I, can we separate? So, ultimately, we, I believe, as a board and administration, agree that we want to ensure that our, all of our professionals within the community continue to grow. And so, that's a separate issue. That's what we're currently discussing. I think where we have been working collaboratively around is ensuring that our, our teachers that are filling in vacancies, whether that be from illness to professional development. It's not always professional development. And some of the concerns that we've had or we've heard from the community or we've heard from the community is around how are we training our substitute teachers to fill in certain higher level programs even? And so we have already implemented swing education, which the Board of Education, thanks to, thanks to all of you, approved the program two board meetings ago. And us three have worked with our personnel services department and already have seen success. Where we're able to request specifics, like special education teachers to be able to fulfill to physical education teachers for PE classes, English for English, fourth grade for fourth grade. So yeah, so two separate issues is.
I want to give the board some context really quick. One bit of context, this is a lengthy request because it's that time of year. Does everyone understand that? Most likely, when we get to our next board meeting, you're going to see this number drop somewhat. However, let me see what happens because we're starting now, we have it on there. But usually you'll see a spike in a lot of conference requests early in like September because we do the fall ones and then we have the spring ones. So as we bring these, it'll be a monthly item if any new ones are happening. Mr. Stewart?
We live in an incredibly rapidly changing world right now. I think that the continuing education and conferences are absolutely crucial for continuing education, for learning new things to bring back to our kids, to bring back to our administrators.
And to share, by the way.
And to share and to, and to collaborate with other people who are in the industry. I don't have a problem with anyone going to better themselves that are for the betterment of our school district. So, Dr. Seaman, I agree. You cannot tell these people to move their conference dates around. They're planned years in advance. I go to quite a few of these in my industry. They are invaluable. Also too, we, if we're going to be known as a leader, we have to be a leader at these conferences to show the rest of the world that we are not only interested in being there, but leading and speaking and presenting. So I am 1,000% on board with making sure that our team is constantly going and represented. And all I care about is if somebody wants to expense suntan lotion. So as long as no one does that, I'm good with it, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Stern. Dr. Stern, any comment?
That's it. I, I recommend we move on because we've spent quite a bit of time on this and there's a lot of things ahead of us.
All right, I agree. Okay, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The motion passes 5-0. And the last item on the list to be pulled is approval of the ratification of the purchase order number 14 for 2024-25. I will make a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I pulled this because I saw as the biggest line item, the AIR tutors. And we've talked about it a couple of times. I just wanted to know, what do you think is, how do you know it's effective? Should we do a survey of the parents or the students? Like, you know, are we using these dollars in the best way?
No, great questions. It's interesting, I actually just got, so they do a quarterly survey for us for all of our current students. I just received it in my email, so I can be able to share that with you. We pull both attendance and grades for students, previous semester to current semester from support. And again, this isn't for lifetime. We're always looking at our, kind of that C, D, and then definitely the F student, predominantly with our EL and Title I students. That's what the funds that we actually use towards this. In there, they provide, if you recall, the reason the system works so well is predominantly for our EL students, they find tutors in their home language. So if they're struggling in physics and they speak, say, Farsi at home, they'll find a Farsi-speaking physics tutor for them. But we do have the data and I can bring that to you in an ed services update at some point, just around how many students are enrolled, what were their previous grades, what's the increase in percentage in our last, last semester last year? It was 100% of our students had gotten off the DNF list.
Well, that's an accomplishment in and of itself.
Yep. And then we do work with student services too to be able to look at that engagement piece. When we know that students feel more empowered or confident coming back after being tutored, we know that they'll participate and show up for class. They don't become school refusals. And that's what our largest concern is around, is that if they're on the DNF list multiple times, they start to skip school and don't want to be around the environment and we're trying to keep them, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's good enough for me. I appreciate the update.
Okay, are there any other comments on that one?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Russell?
I know, you know, I'm not going to nitpick at this here this week.
Thank you.
It doesn't mean I, you know, I don't have a question, I'm just not going to nitpick at it. I know on page one of how you guys present this, you've got like your little legend here, which tells you which fund each comes from. Is there, you know, I'd love to see just another maybe page or another list of explaining, like what is 62666 dot O? And what is district agency object or objective, BSA object or objective? And that code? And then school location department? If there's like, is there like another like legend?
We can easily do that, yeah. We can do, I'm trying to think here. I wouldn't give you the entire chart of accounts, but we can do the resource codes and like titles of the resource code for like 62660, I want to say, I can't remember off the top of my head. But yeah, so.
Are there resilient of them?
There's a number of them, but what we would do is just put a legend. That way you can just go to the resource and know that, what that is, whether it's a general fund. But like 00010 is site-level discretionary. So it come out of that district or that like Horace Mann's discretionary money, which is general fund. I think 6266 is ELOP, if I'm not mistaken, yes, ELOP. So that's Extended Learning Opportunity Grant.
But obviously, there are legends with these numbers on them.
That's in the chart of accounts, but to put the whole chart of counts, I'll see if we can just do a simple resource with that resource number.
Or something that we just have access to ourselves.
I think then if you're going to be doing that, it might be helpful to also put out the, the like 21.1, 21.
The fund names?
The fan names, because I think that would be very helpful. If we're going to do it fair, and I thank you for bringing that up.
I don't think you need to go on everyone, just maybe one so we have access to it.
Yeah, we'll put it in the report with the letter. Because there's a letter in the beginning and then we could have, after the letter, we put a legend.
Sure.
Yeah, that's definitely.
You understand, because I remember that being something that I questioned. Comments, Mrs. Sabag?
I have a question for Irwin Service Corporation on the emergency swim gym bearing repair services for the maintenance and operation?
Yes.
Was that for, I'll wait.
Ken, I'm so glad you stayed around.
Me too.
You're getting your exercise.
I needed it too. Good evening, thank you for having me. So what was the question regarding?
Yes, my question is, were they repairing what the, what the contractor broke basically? What was the issue?
This is related to that. How, when we pulled the motor to examine it for damage related to the water damage itself, we found some parts that were worn that weren't affected by the water damage, which need to be repaired.
Sorry, I can't hear you. Did you say it wasn't affected by the water damage?
Correct. There were some parts inside the motor that were worn that were not part of the water damage. So in fairness, it was, you know, our responsibility to take care of that.
So it was open up and then you saw that it needed to be repaired?
That's correct.
While you see that?
And inadvertently, it's a good thing for us because down the road, it would have failed.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's inside of a giant motor, so it's not something you would ever open up and look at. It would have reached end of useful life and broken at some point in the foreseeable future. So it was actually kind of, we, we sort of lucked out by having this happen because we found the problem.
So what exactly was broken?
There, there's two sets, well, there's numerous sets of bearings within, inside the electrical motor. Two of the bearings had extraordinary wear on them and it would not be appropriate to reassemble the motor and repair the motor without addressing those. However, that damage was not caused by the water damage. That was just natural wear over the period of years.
Okay. And the water damage, was it anywhere near the bearings?
No, it, 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 the bearings are inside the motor. The motor was submerged in water, so the entire motor is affected by it. But it would not be fair to have the contractor that caused the water damage repair something that was a wear item.
The bearings were already there.
The bearings were not worn or damaged from the water. They were worn from use over the years. So it's a separate standalone issue that we discovered upon disassembling the motor and inspecting it.
So let me, let me ask you, just, I mean, you know where I'm going with it. I want to know if he's, if the contractor's liable or were liable. But I understand it's like, it needed to be repaired before, but we would have never known if there wasn't water damage.
Until it broke.
But it's inside the motor.
That's correct.
So the water damage is on the motor and it's the heart of the bearings.
So there are actually pictures, which I'd be glad to send, you know, for your review, you know, even as early as tomorrow. But there are hundreds of parts, it's within the motor, moving parts and coils and windings and bearings and bushings and all kinds of things. So many of the parts were affected by the water damage. The parts that were ferrous metal and started to rust right away. So those are being pulled and repaired and that is the responsibility for the, of the contractor. However, the bearings, which were not affected by the water damage, were worn out or very close to worn out. And so that would have been one of those things, sort of like inside your engine in your car. You might have a part that's well inside the engine that you'd never know has failed, even though you change the oil and do all the things you're supposed to do and then it ultimately breaks, causing a major failure. So we separated that part of the project because it wasn't related to the water damage and it is regular maintenance. We just happened to find out about it because of the water damage. And that caused us to have to pull the motor, open it up, and then we discovered that problem. So theoretically, the motor on the other side potentially has the same amount of wear on it, which, you know, we would have to make a decision whether or not we're going to be preemptive and pull the whole motor because of that.
But to the other point, if the water damage didn't happen, it would still be working?
It would still be working until it broke.
Yeah.
Due to a failure of those bearings.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I've had this issue before. I had a joint use agreement with another organization, a different district, with a pool heater. And we really, we had to get the contractor, we had to get the, all the different three parties. There was warranty that only covers certain parts. But again, we couldn't figure it out until we pulled it all apart. And yes, it was broken. So at that point, we had to do essentially the same thing, figure out what the district.
But usually when there's water damage, they have to fix the whole shell and everything that's in it. So it's interesting that it was separated saying, you know, because it's inside of it. So it's part of the unit. So I, it's, it's unusual.
Well, the part was not water damaged. That, that's the simple.
It's an unusual.
I have another question, maybe you can answer also. Garza Construction Repair Services?
Okay.
41,800. So what exactly is that for, maintenance?
Several months ago, we had a delivery truck from our food services supplier pull underneath our bridge at the Beverly Hills High School. And it was, the truck was too high and it hit the bridge and did substantial damage to it. We initially were going to file a claim with the driver, the company and their insurance. It became sort of a back and forth argument. They weren't happy with the quote of the repair. At that point, I reached out to Keenan, our representative there, because they help us with all sorts of issues like this. They sent out an adjuster. They took all the information and we were going to file a claim with Keenan for the, for, under our insurance and have them subrogate. However, during the process of the repair, this is just a couple of weeks ago, I received a letter or an email from one of the representatives from Keenan indicating that we did not have enough money in our trust fund to cover this particular claim. And so we don't have coverage. They will still help us subrogate and collect the 41,000 from the party that injured us. However, we need to pay the vendor. We did the repairs in an emergency fashion for two reasons. Number one, there was sharp, heavy and dangerous material hanging from the bridge, which is a major path of travel for not only vehicles, but all of our students and staff that travel between the A and the V buildings at the high school. Additionally, Garza was engaged in a large project at the Beverly Hills High School using the exact same subs that we would need for this project. So he's got a job that he went out to bid for about a year ago. They're completing it at the Beverly Hills High School, A building, restrooms upstairs. They actually had the stucco, the plaster contractors, the gentleman that does the steel studs and all the equipment right there on site. And so we made the decision to move ahead and, and complete the repairs. So that's.
So I, I have a little bit of issue with things like that happening. Does anybody have a question? You understand what happened? So basically, the truck broke. We're, we're paying for somebody else that did damage to our district.
So is, what piece of the puzzle will insurance take care of? And is there, how does the insurance piece fit into all of this?
Right now, I will have to reach out to Keenan and, and ask them where we are in the subgration process because they will end up going after, as a service to us, the, the party that injured us, to collect on that. And they should be paying the entire amount.
So they'd send a notification and all that.
Yeah, I think the dilemma that we have is if we, if we wait to pursue another entity for the dollars, then our students are not going to have a swim gym.
Well, no, no, well, this is for the overhang. So the problem is it was an immediate threat. We had to get fixed ASAP. Now, we're collecting the money, we'll, we'll go forward with that.
I just want to make sure that the investigation of the insurance is, is going on and there's a claim. Is there a claim?
There is a claim with Keenan. I have to reach out to find out what their subgration process is. Yeah.
Okay.
Which I will. In fact, if we want to talk about it our next meeting, I'll get, I'll have an update for us.
All right, any further discussion? No? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, this motion, this motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Thank you.
Okay, student board member is at movie night tonight, graduation, so I hope he's enjoying himself. By the way, I need to tell you that, did you know that he plays the piano? And he's a very fine pianist. And, and, and also, Dr. Stern's son played the drums so loud you could bust the eardrums. And he won the competition. Remy came in third though. So our, our school board is well represented at the talent show last night. And I thought that might be an interesting comment and I'm making that for Remy. Remy, I hope you can hear me. Okay, Dr. Hasty, your turn, your report.
Thank you. Let me see if I'm sharing my screen. Okay, it came up. I do want to talk about the, the next step with the purchase order report, just because this is some of the things. We're just, I call them baby steps. We're trying to get, going in the right direction. One thing I'm going to ask at our next board meeting, I'll bring that purchase report and I'm going to have clear on whether it was board-approved already and that we'll have markings for that. And then again, I'm sure that'll probably create some different discussions. Just, you know, that, that way you're starting to see like, hey, this PO, because I know there's been a discussion from the board and direction. To be more transparent and also to, that when POs are coming to the board, that, how do we know? You know, how do we know this came to us before? You know, is that dollar there? Typically, we would have whether it was board-approved. And again, this hasn't been a practice here. The other piece of that too, there will be ones that aren't board-approved and that's where we'd have to explain, like we had an emergency, we had to get this done. We had to pay that invoice. You know, there are business operations. One thing I do want to ask the board, maybe just to consider moving forward, we probably, it's not a probably, we need to really refine the thresholds as to what the board wants to come to board on a regular basis. And so many districts will pick dollar amounts. We have Cupca, if you will, and that's the California accounting structure. We, we have a resolution that we can do informal bidding for construction-type projects of 75,000, up to 75,000. So meaning we wouldn't have to go through the formal bid process. We do informal, we can call for bids. Another one would be like professional services. And I can't, it's over 100,000 we can do for professional services. And again, some districts follow that. We're a small district, so I couldn't see us going that high. Because it sounds to me, the feedback I've received thus far is that the board would really want to look at things at a certain dollar amount, probably not over 75. You want something probably a little lower. But I'm going to just encourage the board to maybe consider that. And it's a discussion we can have at a later date. That way we'll just have really clear guidelines for one, what would go on a consent calendar? So we can just pull it and know exactly. You could still pull things individually, but what would be the thresholds? And then second, what would be an action item where we'd want to do a motion and really have a discussion around? So those are things to come, but I want to encourage the board, maybe we can set those moving forward.
I'd like to add one thing also. Just, I didn't missed it, the opportunity, but the conference from my department, actually, Dr. Wardrop and I are presenting at the state conference. So we are doing some of the things that Mr. Stewart wanted us to do.
Share those with us, Stewart.
Great. So I'm going to get started. Again, Cesar Chavez, we recognize Cesar Chavez's day as a U.S. federal commemorative holiday proclaimed in 2014. The holiday celebrates the birth and legacy of the civil rights and labor movement activist, Cesar Chavez, on March 31st of every year. I'm also, autism acceptance month is going to be the month of April. I just can't say enough about this. You know, I personally have family members, you know, that have been diagnosed and I have close relationships with. have close relationships with. You know, I have, I have one person, if I had to get up and walk away right now, it can call me at any time, and I answer that phone call. So, I just want to, personally and also as a district, recognize the value, you know, everybody, children and adults bring, that, you know, are considered on the spectrum. And again, I, there's, there, I, I have a personal take in that. So I just want to make, you know, make it aware that we are going to be looking at that for April. Spring recess is right around the corner. You know, so we're beginning next week, and a lot of things we're getting ready for, so I might not be available as much next week, because I have children myself I have to watch. Okay, so this is a really exciting thing. Excellence in Action. Colby Gilardian, former student and now a consultant that's working with us, came up to me, and he's like, hey, I have this idea. And I'm like, go with it. I'm a big believer in the yes and philosophy. It's kind of, there's a book about yes and. And really, when people come to you with ideas, it's not, we don't shut things down. We always say yes and. And it really supports a positive climate and culture, and also, more importantly, innovation. Colby came to me with this idea, excellence in education, something where anybody in the district can submit something positive, so we can really get the good news and highlight people. So, he put a protocol together, and this email just went out today. So, we're really excited about what this will bring to the, the district, and the positive news, and also just celebrating the great work throughout the district of individuals, students and staff and community. Upcoming events. So we have the High School College Fair. It's March twenty-six, six P.M. We have, Friday, March twenty-eighth, we have Reed Across BHUSD at El Rodeo. Horace Mann Elementary School Career Day, and then March thirty-first and April fourth, we have our spring recess, I already said. And then, of course, exciting, Mary Poppins is, is going to be on its way, April tenth through April twelfth, the High School Spring Musical. One of my favorite things. So, I want to, what do we have next? Okay, so I want to say thank you, and again, excited about the great work we're doing, and I really feel, just with the team, with Ms. Collins-Williams, Dr. Seaman, and also the support of the board, just, we're seeing real change in action, and hopefully, every time we come together, we're going to move that needle a little bit more in the right direction.
Thank you, Dr. Hasty.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Hasty. Okay, we come now to the regular part of the calendar, or the agenda. I would like to ask for an approval of the First Amendment of Employment for Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. I would like Dr. Hasty to just explain what this is. This is not something that would be requiring a lot of, it's something we've already agreed to, but I would like to just explain to the community what this is about.
Yes, absolutely. Right now, Dr. Seaman and Ms. Collins-Williams have, let me make sure I'm looking at the right thing, yes, stepped up, and you'll see here, this is an agreement, an amendment to their current contracts to increase at a three percent, because they are taking on extra work in the absence of some human resources leadership. And so, I just want to, for one, give them a, a big thank you for stepping up in this time of transition. And so, this definitely is supporting that, and they're doing great work in extra work that correlates with this increase.
I would like to couple these two together, then, and ask for the approval of the First Amendment for Employment Agreement for Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services and for the Students' Services. I will make the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Are there any discussion?
Just, I just would like to thank all three of you, and this is the moment to thank you, Mrs. Collins-Williams, and you, Dr. Seaman. I know that it has been a time of change and transition and recalibration, but having both of you there advising us, talking to us, disagreeing with us when appropriate, and also affirming us, you know, when we say things and, and you, you see what we see, is very valuable. It means a lot to, I don't speak for the board, but it has meant a lot to all of us. And thank you for being steady and true with us. And this amount is, as far as I'm concerned, a token of our appreciation. You know, there's, I don't know how else to thank you, other than to approve this and to say thank you for being with us every step of the way. It's much appreciated.
Russell, any?
How do you beat that? I mean, absolutely. I mean, obviously, when we started this journey four months ago, we, you know, had no idea what configuration that we would be in right now. So, again, just to, just echo Judy, thank you. I mean, thank you so much. We're putting you guys, you know, through a lot, but we wouldn't be here without you, and we all have all the faith in the world in you. Your professionalism and skill are just world-class, and I'm just grateful that you're here to guide us, and I've never seen such professionals who can take adversity, keep the train rolling, and still win. So, thank you, guys.
And I want to also add my thanks to the stepping up and moving us ahead almost flawlessly so that there's been no real hiccups along the way, and I really appreciate that we've been able to move like, just like before. So, thank you very, very much.
I would like to also thank you, thank both of you. I'd like to say exactly what Mrs. Marcus also said, there's been no hiccups. So it's been very professional. We, I, I think we're a pretty strong board. I think we ask a lot of very difficult questions, and all our questions are being answered in a very professional way, and we all, you know, try to, whatever we have questions to, it's, it's being done. And what I love, I'd like to say that when I did tour El Rodeo yesterday, what I enjoyed was Dr. Seaman's energy and incredible love for what he does. So, the love shows, the passion shows, and I think that even with extra, whatever you need to do, both of you, you enjoy it. And I think that's where it's at, is you love what you do. You both love what you do, and it shows, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. Stern.
Largely echo the comments of, the sentiments of my colleagues, but I have always treasured both of you immensely. You have talent that, and knowledge that goes not only wide, but has a lot of breadth to it. And I feel like, you know, when I have questions, you guys really know the answer, not only from just academic knowledge, but from experiencing it on campus, and we're very lucky to have you. And I, it's not lost upon me that you guys are not only doing your, you know, the jobs that you had before, but you also have, of course, an add-on, and it's just a small token of thanks to increase your income on that level, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes, five and oh. Thank you. The next, call for the approval of the 2025-26 Certified and Classified Management Salary Schedule. I would like to make a comment on that. I did ask a question, I don't know that it got answered. You mentioned the, and I, I would love, and I'll do all the rest of them instead, but on letter C, you asked for the certificating, and the others, you actually outlined new jobs. But in the one that we're approving here, you did not, and this was also as a Director of Personnel Services, which is a new job, which is listed in the salary, but is not listed as a new job. Did we already approve that before?
Yes.
Because I don't see that. That's what I was wondering.
Correct. And then, you, you approved that job description for Executive Director Personnel Services, the last board meeting, along with the pay range. And I brought that to the board then, at that time.
Oh, I didn't remember that, so I just wanted to make sure that that was identified, and it was identified.
And again.
Okay, I have no problem then.
Okay.
Okay, so I will call for the, oh, any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, Mrs. Marcus and I reached out to you to ask you to please send out a communication to the community.
Absolutely.
And thank you in advance for doing that. And so, I think that a lot of, unfortunately, because of the March fifteenth deadline, we have to release certain positions, and then, because some folks are taking retirement or for a variety of reasons, we had to hold it until this meeting. And so, excuse me, I think it would be really valuable for the community to, to know, this is where we are, this is the why, this is what the, you know, how these roles are coming back, and all of the work is not going to just disappear, it's going to be done by folks who will now fill in these associated positions.
Agreed. We will be sending out a communication, for sure.
Thank you, thank you in advance.
Okay. Any other comment? Hearing none, I'll call for the approval of the motion. Oh, wait, I don't think we had a, I did not get a motion. I will make a motion, and I have a second, please.
I'll second the approval of the 25-26 Certified and Classified Management Salary Schedule.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion passes five and oh. Okay, I would like to group together D, E, F and G, and make a motion to approve all four. I'll go for the approval of the payroll management job description, the purchasing agent, the custodial services and operations management job, and the director of technology, information technology services. I, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mandy. Dr. Stern. Any comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, I will call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, the motion passes five and oh. Moving on, we need a, approval of resolution, I'll ask for a motion. Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I make a mo, I move to approve Resolution 24-25-19 for the issuance of the Beverly Hills Unified School District 2025 General Obligation Refunding Bonds.
And I will second the motion.
Do you all need another presentation on this?
No. But, but I do want to make the note.
Any conversation, a discussion?
Yeah, I just think it's very important to highlight for anybody who's, who's watching out there, that in the last meeting, we had a really thorough presentation, and the bonds, as we have them, are in, are in tranches of different multimillion-dollar amounts. So at this moment in time, we have the opportunity to refinance thirty-five million dollars in bonds. There is no fiscal impact on BHUSD, and it's going to save our taxpayers some dollars.
Which we will pass on to the community.
Which will be passed on, I mean, essentially, everybody will see their property taxes go down a little bit, and hopefully renters might benefit from it as well. And my notes from the last minute meeting indicate a 1.1 million dollars in savings to the taxpayers. The current rate is 3.73 percent, and the new rate will be 2.89 percent. And thank you, Dr. Hasty, and your department for bringing this to us.
Any other comment? Nope. Okay, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes five and oh. And now, for the approval of the Public Agency Retirement Services PAR's Supplemental Retirement Plan. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Dr. Stern, thank you. Is there any discussion on this? This is something that has been brought up during the last meeting, and it's something that, it is important for us to, if we're going to pass it, and the savings that it will bring to the district, so that in the, the people that are involved in it will know that we have approved it, and that they are now going to go forward with it, and they will be expected, because they've signed a preliminary agreement, as I understand, and that this will now finalize that agreement, that they will be accepting the SERP at the end of the year, and will be resigning from the district. It is not necessarily that they're getting the teacher's retirement plan, that's totally not related to this. This is a plan where they will get eighty percent of their last salary spread out over however many years they want, whatever plan they want, and there's a number of teachers that are taking it, some certificated and some classified staff. So, this is an opportunity for us to maybe make some savings over the next five years, and hopefully, let some people who want to retire or relax and take it easy, or do something else, they get a chance to do something else. So, with that, I'll ask if there's any other discussion?
No, just, you know, a thank you to those who have served our school district, and our students, and our families. The work that all of you do is not easy work.
We'll get a chance to say that.
Yeah, and hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to honor all of the people. We're not allowed to share who they are, but we've wanted to preserve their anonymity, and so that's why we haven't shared which roles are, are being served, which roles will be coming back on in other ways. But we thank everybody for their service, and we wish them all the best in the, in the next chapter. And I feel very lucky that it be BHUSD. We have not engaged, in the several years that I've been here, in any layoffs, and engaging in this SERP is a way to respect our staff, which we do, and we wish them all the best in the next chapter.
Thank you.
Any other?
None. Okay, hearing no further comments or discussion, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor, aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion passes five and oh. Move for motion to reject the claim, number 652286. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Manichari. I'll call for the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, it moves forward five and oh. Acceptance and filing of a notice of completion for the Horace Mann New Playground Shade Structure with TLS Choice LLC. I will make a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you to Mrs. Manichari. Any discussion?
Yes.
You go ahead.
I wanted to bother Mr. Haas and/or Mr. Karat, please. Hi, gentlemen.
You're never bothering us.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. So, just as a, just as a recap for our community, one thing that we've been doing in terms of facilities is trying to turn what used to be kindergarten through eight schools to, into TK through five schools. And one of the pieces of the puzzle is really protecting our kids with these playground shade structures in the TK and Kinder Yards, and I want to thank you both for your time on it. I know we went through like different iterations, and putting a pole in the ground is not as easy as one would think, because DSA governs our constructions and not the City of Beverly Hills, so it's, it's a tough burden. I just wanted to ask you, since I've got you both here, if possibly you can soon provide us an update for the gate installation at Horace Mann, because we had set aside developer dollars for that, and I know that we all want to keep our students and staff as safe as possible, and we determined the gate would be a, a good way to do that. And then next, we also discussed the ER TK Kinder Yard being revamped a little bit to serve our youngest students as, as much as possible. And just so you know, the state is changing the timeframe for who, for which students qualify for TK, and they're expanding it, so we're expecting at least one additional TK class this fall, which means we're not going to get any reprieve, and that TK Kinder Yard is really going to be used. And so, we welcome your focus. I personally welcome your focus on that one Horace Mann matter and the one ER matter, please.
Well, I'll speak about the Horace Mann gate briefly. We already installed the actual fence several weeks ago, and this Saturday, we'll be installing the actual gate. So that'll be a complete, yeah.
Thank you.
And then, do you want to talk about El Rodeo? At our last meeting, I had mentioned that we were having ongoing discussions about that, and those have not concluded at this point. I think it's going to be a matter for Dr. Hasty and Will and I to collaborate.
Okay.
And get this finished up, and if we want to use the timeframe of the next couple of weeks, I don't see any reason why we can't have some type of plan and budgeting for our. So, what I, what Mr. Haas and I are working on is to get a summer project list for the board to bring in one fell swoop, where you would see, for instance, if we have to re-stripe, if we have to do duck cleaning, when maybe we could add any of this work that would happen or need to happen. And I know it was with, with the area El Rodeo, we could put that as one of our summer projects, and we'd bring that as a list of items, one of the list.
Great. Thank you so much. I know that, I mean, my understanding is El Rodeo is holding summer school this year, right? So, good luck.
Yeah.
The BHUSD is hosting summer school at Horace Mann. The city's hosting summer school at El Rodeo.
At El Rodeo, yes.
And then we're going to get into a pattern of flipping each year, so that way, we always know what space we're going to be utilizing.
Perfect. Well, in years past, didn't we do them at the same facility?
We used to, and then it was just a lot of wear and tear on each facility. Having two programs, we're also competing for space, such as like playground time, cafeteria time. And so now, we can run two separate programs. We also, going into the summer, for those that have participated in our after-school program, which some people have coined STAR or EOLP, we, as a district, education services has taken that over. We used to leverage the city program, and we are no longer utilizing them. We are utilizing our own. We're in the RFP process right now, which has closed. We are in the scoring arena of selecting our support vendor for that. So it'll help us with those funds. So, yeah.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to hearing back on it.
I just—I have a couple of questions for you guys. Sorry. In regards to the notice of completion, you physically inspected everything. Everything's good. We can sign off and approve it?
Yep, absolutely. Not only do we, me personally, but also the inspector of record, and also one of our team members from Fond du Soleil.
Okay, great. And I wanted also to ask you, in El Rodeo, I heard that they are also—some parents want shade over there. Have you heard anything about that? The playground needs shade?
Well, you know, we heard that especially towards the end of our construction project. It just wasn't really—there wasn't really any feasible space. We do have a couple of large shade structures there, but otherwise, you know, we're talking about putting shade over maybe the soccer field, or—which wouldn't make too much sense. And then the—
The playground has shade? I wasn't paying attention.
The playground, actual structures have umbrella shades above them, but not like a large shade structure like we did at Horace Mann.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Hearing none, it passes five and oh. Okay. The next one, I call for a motion on item B. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to accept the filing of a Notice of Completion and Release of Retention for the El Rodeo Additional Purchase of Furniture, Fixtures, and Equipment with Pivot Interiors.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Sabat. Okay. I have a question on this one. I'm not sure that a Notice of Completion of a release and retention—what are we—what does the retention part have to do with the equipment that we have? Are we sending it back, or is this extra equipment? What is this?
No, so retention is something that we hold for most of our construction contracts. So each contract that we let out, we hold back 5%. And then we don't release that retention amount until after the job has been completed, it's been inspected, all the materials there. And then what we have to do before we release the retention is file a Notice of Completion with the state or the county. And that allows any subcontractors who may still be owed money a chance. They get 35 days—
I see.
—to claim anything against the contract before we officially distribute the money.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other motions or discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four and oh. Mrs. Lissa Manichieri took a break. Number, letter C, Approval of Amendment 42 to the Agreement with DLR for Architectural and Engineering Services for Beverly Hills High School Modernization Project. I make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I have a question on this. I've been here a while. Number 42. How many more are we going to see? I mean, this is—and the amount of money for DLR, which is the architectural firm, it seems like every time we turn around, there's another amendment to this contract.
So what I'd like to just say about that is this contract goes back to 2012 or so, obviously long before I got here, but the team that was here before me decided to create this original contract for like the site planning for the high school and all the construction that followed. So rather than doing a separate contract for each project, they just amending—they've been amending their original contract, which is not something I would have done if I was here, but now we're this far into it, and all the projects are in design or already approved by DSA. This number 42 is for building C. Most of the previous amendments have been for B3, B4, B1, B2, the south side athletic field. So I understand why 42 seems like a lot.
Is it kind of like a change order?
I have a question, though. Is this going to create any delay in terms of any DSA approval or anything like that because of this new contractor—new architectural procedure?
No, actually, this is for the value engineering, for the ideas that the least-leaseback contractor came up with. So the Swinerton, the least-leaseback contractor, came up with a list of items that would help us save some money, value engineering. And the amount is, I think, at least over $2 million at this point. But in order for us to bring those into the project, the design has to be done and incorporated into the drawings.
Yeah. I would say this is an amendment that we want—
Yeah.
—because for building C, if you guys recall, we went back and we had to make some reductions so that we could finish with the bond dollars that we have. We're not going to be in a deficit in the sense that there will be a time period where we're out of dollars and we're waiting for state modernization funds to come in, but we'll be able to figure it out in that interim period. But to me, the purpose of this amendment is to memorialize the value engineering that we had asked for, so maybe the missing pieces for us to have been told, hey, we're going to spend $150,000 in new architectural fees, but we're going to save like $12 million—
Well, not 12, but 2.
—as an example, $2 million.
Well, I don't know that it says that there that we're going to save money on that, but I just want to make sure that this is not going to cause a delay of any kind.
No.
That's—my concern is that I do not want us to see August 1st come around, and we are not ready to open that building.
No, but this is for building C.
Oh, this is building C.
Well, no, I'm not talking about C. I'm talking about—
So this is—
This didn't say—it says a move of amendment for 42 was—doesn't mention where it is for the building C, including a revised lighting package. So this is not going to affect that at all.
No.
No.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, this is for building C that hasn't even started yet.
Well, we've started.
Just broke ground, yes.
Yeah.
So it's to add the lighting package? Why didn't we have it in the beginning with the architect and the engineering?
No, it wasn't to add, it was to value engineer the lighting package.
Revised, yeah.
So it wasn't just the lighting, there's also some other things—
Clay roofing?
—mechanical, concrete.
Concrete?
Yeah.
Block? And among others. So I don't know what the others are.
It is listed in their scope of work that was attached. Concrete, rubber flooring, sealed concrete, windows, value engineering for windows, roofing. There's a lot of items.
Right, but it's only the architecture and engineering?
Yes, architecture and engineering.
So the plans that they need to go by.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just have one housekeeping thing. I know that this document's a few weeks old, but it is dated for tomorrow. And just for, like I said, for housekeeping purposes, Dr. Hasty, when you sign it, you are now interim superintendent and not acting. Perhaps just a quick update of that.
Yeah, we can correct that before we send it.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for catching that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Five and oh. And that now brings us to some board discussions that have been asked for by some of the members of the board. And I will start the discussion by opening the first one, letter A, Trademark and Licensing District Initiatives. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Stewart, you are the one that's responsible for this one. Could you share what your ideas are and so on?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Marcus. I'd like to bring forward a proposal focused on proactively leveraging our strengths, especially of the Beverly Hills name and the brand equity to benefit our district, particularly in the areas of athletics, extracurricular programs, and long-term funding sustainability. Our name is not just the Beverly Hills Unified School District. It is Beverly Hills, a globally recognized name that carries a reputation for excellence. Yet, as a school district, we've not fully captured the licensing, branding, or sponsorship opportunities that could directly benefit our students and programs. To that end, I am requesting that the board designate myself, Mrs. Manichieri, and Dr. Hasty to secure intellectual property rights relating to BHUSD and its assets, including names, logos, mascots, visual identity of our schools, teams, disciplines, clubs, and programs. And to work with potential sponsors and endorsement partners to identify and pursue branding opportunities that could come back to this board for approval. This is not about commercializing for its own sake. It's about protecting the integrity of our brand, ensuring that we control its use, and create new opportunities to enhance our athletic and academic programs. I believe that this strategic initiative aligns with our mission of excellence, and I respectfully ask that the board move forward with this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any discussion on this going forward?
Yeah.
Mrs. Manichieri?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for thinking outside of the box and trying to protect the district and its assets. And I mean, I like it, to say the least. I like it a lot, and it would be my honor to work with you and move it forward.
Mrs. Sabat?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Stewart. This would be incredibly amazing and wonderful opportunity for our district, our students with the pride to show, you know, our athletic sports team and professionalism, and fantastic moving forward. Thank you for working on it and bringing it to the board. Thank you.
I like the idea very much. I think that—I know city council has taken—have done a lot of iterations of the Beverly Hills crest and signage. I would just ask that, you know, we continue not to have, you know, partisan morphing of our logo, which I just think goes without saying, but I think that it would be a great idea to do it along with branding guidelines and cosponsors or athletics, I think makes a lot of sense.
I want to thank you, Mr. Stewart, for taking the initiative on this. I have a question, and that would be concerning the logos that we already have. How would they be incorporated, or would they be brand-new ones? I mean, as you can see, we do have some kind of a logo for the school district already on the wall. How does that differ? What exactly are you planning with in terms of licensing and so on?
That's a great question. Excuse me, I'm sorry for my voice. At first, it's not about physically doing any licensing. It's about securing the trademarks of all of our IP. So every single logo you see on the wall—I believe, three or four years ago, a firm was hired to create new marks, you know, of different shapes and sizes. So securing each one of those, as well as the individual names like Beverly Hills Football and Beverly Hills Soccer, where we would have the trademark of those, which then give us greater possibilities for licensing out to brands and other types—
For selling things.
—of partnerships.
I see. Okay, I just—
And of course, to protect. That's the number-one thing. Following schools like Harvard Westlake, who locks down literally every single thing that they have, and it's not only for clothing, it's for book bags, you know, and hats and pencils, and they consider themselves like a university, where if you look at somewhere like USC, you know, or UCLA, they have every part of their existence is legally locked down because it's their, you know, it's their whole brand, you know? And we, as, you know, city, you know, of Beverly Hills, our brand is crucial to every single thing that we want to do going forward, and locking this down immediately is just a very smart move.
Harvard University also did that a while ago, about 15 years ago, because they were having issues with people just sort of using it loosely or making letterhead or making badges, and they said, hey, you know, we really need to protect it so people aren't using it for other purposes. And I know they went through that whole process. So I think it's very smart and very prudent.
Okay, thank you very much for bringing that up. We'll look forward to a report from you both in the future.
I just want to say, I'm really excited about this work. And I think as a district, coming from—again, I talk about three athletes that played in college. I really find that this will be a great journey, and it'll bring value to what we're doing as a district. And so excited. So we'll definitely get going and get together, and it starts with one, and then two, and the next thing you know, we have a whole program that's bringing in a level of revenue that will fund things.
And recognition. So, Dr. Hasty, does this mean, since we all gave positive feedback, that Mr. Stewart has the direction and instruction that he needed, or—
Yeah, he does. And what I would do is—
I thought the three of you are going to be involved working together.
Yes.
What I'll do is set up—
I was saying he was requesting something in particular, so we're good to go.
Yeah, we're good to go. What I'll do is, we'll follow up with a meeting to kind of get an action plan, and then we'll get a draft plan going as to what are the next deliverables, and then we'll be reporting to board over the next few months. Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, the next item that we have for discussion is a premier athletics program, and I do believe you brought that to our attention, Mrs. Manichieri. Would you like to discuss what you had in mind?
Yes, ma'am. I get stopped by our students at Rite Aid in Mammoth and everywhere else that I go, and they love their sports, and they want a little bit more from their sports. And so you can tell that the athletics are a huge part of what's good in their lives. And I think they just—they want it to have a little bit more substance and a little bit more meaning. And I would love it if our—if our board would agree to direct and/or instruct Dr. Hasty, and then, of course, if, you know, since we have three assistant superintendents with extensive athletic success behind them, start to develop what a premier athletic program would mean. And I don't mean that in a way to indicate that we don't have a premier athletic program. I think we have a lot of amazing stuff going on, but kind of in line with what you were saying, the students want consistent, fresh uniforms, the students want gym bags that reflect that they come from BHUSD, they want to look uniform, they want to be presentable. It could mean more. It could mean that the way that we approach our coaches is that we're paying them more or we're paying them in another structure, and we're paying them a livable wage, you know, that they can feed their families on. And so I think that the possibilities are many. I emailed you, Dr. Hasty, like, an 18-point list, because I, for six months, was collecting comments and suggestions. And so that's just a list, those are some ideas, but that comes from parents, staff, students, some board members. And so I just ask you if you could please look into that, and also to set aside the dollars for that. You know, our construction at the high school is finally coming to an end. We have 24 teams in the middle school at this point, which is—we've gotten to a great place, but now, how are we going to level up, you know? So I would be interested to know, what does Mirac—what does Manhattan Beach do? What is Miracosta doing? That kind of a thing. I know that we don't have necessarily private school dollars, but I do believe that we can still up the game and bring more value to the program. So I—do my colleagues have any questions?
Mr. Stewart?
I could not agree with you more. I definitely would love to get, in a very, very soon board meeting— a very strong overview as to where we're at when it comes to budgeting for athletics right now. I was personally witness to a basketball team that came and played us here that stepped off of, you know, their bus just looking like absolute pros. And not to say that we look bad, but we are the city of Beverly Hills. And we are expected globally to look the best. And our kids deserve the very best. And right now, I know for certain that there are kids going out there with mismatched shorts and shirts, things that have been handed down. And it just relays a lack of confidence in our programs, in my opinion, when we are not supplying these hard-working kids who are busting their butt as we all, you know, come from athletic backgrounds. And we all know how much work it took to become even half-decent at these sports. And the fact that we have not allocated the funds for these kids to be able to, you know, strap on the latest shoes and have a great bag and have a great outfit. So when they step on that court, they feel just as good as they've been training. And I think that is absolutely crucial. And there is nothing more that would make me happier than for every single one of our sports, and I think we have 13 that we're currently actively doing, to have every single one of these kids, when they earn a spot on that team, we show them back that love for that effort that they, you know, have put in with brand-new equipment that all matches, that makes them look and feel like professionals. And I want to dedicate all of the resources that we have to make sure that they understand that this board and this administration is watching. We care, and that help is coming. And I'm sorry that it has not been there for so long. But for 2025, 2026 season, I want us to look like pros.
I would just say, the look is one thing, but then it's also about the communications, the, you know, the way the programming works as well. I think there's been a lot of improvement in the last two years, but we could probably do more. And so my email suggests a lot of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can I-
Mrs. Sabag?
Thank you. I want to, I want to say that the sports is extremely important. Thank you for working on that. Thank you for bringing it to the attention. Once we get our students to be extremely excited in the sports, that'll change everything. It'll change so much with the spirit of our district. And sports is part of the academics. Because sports is going to get their academics way up. Because first of all, they have to keep it up in order to attend and keep going to their games and, you know, whatnot. So when they look the part, and they look good, and they win, and they have that excitement, it's going to boost so many things, including, you know, troubleshooting any student that has problems or any academic problems. I think it's fantastic, and I'm so excited. Can't wait to see what the future entails.
I think what's great about good intact uniforms that match and all that, of course, it, you know, has team unity, and it makes them look like a million dollars, whatever. But I think we should also consider extending that to other parts of our school that have the same sort of need for unity and looking like a class act. I don't know if any of you went to the robotics tournaments. But, you know, if you look at some of the teams, like at Harvard-Westlake, you know, they have, they have matching uniforms, and they don't just have t-shirts. So I would really encourage the board to, in orchestra, right? Or some of the, I mean, there's a lot of clubs, right? What are some other ones that, I'm not thinking?
Maybe we can expand the definition to be enhanced athletic and extracurriculars.
Right, right.
Well, I want to take that further.
Let's go.
Dr. Stern, I concur. I concur with what you're saying times a million. We only chose sports for this conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
It needs to be everything.
Right.
Everything.
It really puts us on the map, especially when we go and we travel and we see, oh, look, you know, there's 12 other teams, and they're all outfitted and, yeah.
From robotics to academics, to culinary programs, to KBEV, to everything should be the world's best. So absolutely, I concur with you completely.
Well, one of the things I was going to bring out is the fact that you go to the madrigal performances, and the girls in the madrigals or the fellows are all dressed in tuxes and, what, gowns? And they really, you know, they shine that way. So, and I'm thinking in terms of the kids during orchestra, go to an orchestra concert. The kids wear a black suit, or they wear white shirts, and so on. That whole thing, maybe there's a way that we can even include the visual and performing arts, especially the orchestra, and so on. I would just like to make a comment, and Mrs. Sabag, you mentioned it briefly. Athletics does an unbelievable thing for students in terms of self-esteem. And when they can come to a tournament or to a game dressed like they are professionals, it's amazing what it can do to them. But, and again, what athletics can do for the student who doesn't excel so much in the academics, he can really shine in the sports world. And conversely, if there's an athlete who doesn't want to do, you know, he still has to keep his grades up, so that they need to keep a certain grade point average to participate. So it has an all-around effect on kids going forward in terms of not only sports, but I remember, I always like to remember that when you play a musical instrument, and this has nothing to do with that so much, but it does something for the students as far as their ability to study and in school and learning and so on. For something, it does something to the brain. What it is, I don't know. I don't understand it quite that well. But I do know that as a young girl, playing a flute, I was like in heaven whenever I could play in the orchestra. So it is important in all areas of the curriculum that we could have students participate in, no matter if it's athletics, or it's orchestra, or if it's performing arts in the shows that are coming up. It does so much for their self-esteem, you have no idea. So I'm glad that we're discussing this.
It keeps them busy, and we want them to be busy. And also, it helps with their college applications and scholarships.
And actually, in the, in the, my 18-point plan, I had scholarships as part of that. And so it's really about also helping them get into four-year universities. Like, for example, we had a young lady last year who went to UCSB on, I think, a running or track scholarship. And so-
On the cross-country?
Cross-country, yeah. And so that's the thing, is that I think that it is a well that we're not really tapping into, and we could be. And it has a lot of potential to get our kids into four-year universities and aspiring to do that. So thank you in advance. So I guess you've got your direction.
Yeah, I mean-
And thank you for your care and time, all three of you, and your input. I hope that this is going to support not only our students, but our athletic staff will know that we're prioritizing what they do. Isn't it something like at least 400 or 500 of our students at the high school are on teams? Yeah, so it's a significant portion of our students.
And those that are not on teams want to be on teams. So, yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, thank you. To be continued.
And just to echo one last thing. Some of you, I told this story to, and I will keep it extremely short. I was spoken to by a seventh grader from Beverly Vista a few days ago at a grocery store. And she plays the violin. I will not say her name, because I'm sure I'd be super embarrassed. But she plays the violin. She was in the performance that I believe some of you went to a few days ago. And she was very confident, and she came up to me and said, why are a lot of our instruments broken? And I won't get into all the details of what she said, but I made about 30 notes on my phone. And just to go and say how it's not just about sports. This girl, she pulled out her phone. She played me a video of her playing the violin. She's phenomenal. And then she said, but all the chinrests are broken, and half the bows don't work. And da-da-da-da-da-da-da. But I'm dedicated. I want to be a world-class violinist. In fact, she even told me that she was now. But she was like, where is the support? Where's, you know, my new bow? I mean, you can talk about footballs and all that, but where's my new bow and my new chinrest? And I said, yeah, where is that? Let's go and make sure that that happens.
Yeah, I grew up playing the violin, and there, yes, from, up until I was 18, that's all I did, all I did. And so, and my parent, my dad as well. And so we had, we were always dealing, there's like, like, you know how you have skateboards with different parts? Violins are the same way. So I would argue that, like, chinrest is probably not broken, but you can tweak it and take it off and replace it. So maybe some are missing, which would make it very hard to play. And then bows are very fragile. And so, yeah, just like anything, there needs to be inventory and maintenance and reharing the bows. And we were always doing stuff. We had like, you know, rooms full of just like dead violins that were being, you know, refurbished. But that's a point well taken.
Well, I don't know where that information comes from, but I would love to learn that as quickly as possible. And whatever we can do to make those kids feel like they're, you know-
Important.
Seriously.
You know. It's got to be a no-child-left-behind attitude for every single department that we have. And we just need to put a new dedication onto every single aspect of our district that if it's not working, or if it's not the best, it needs our full attention.
Thank you so much, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I think we're going to be looking forward to some very interesting plans in the future. And I want to thank you for bringing that up. The next item for discussion is an enhanced college and career center. I didn't put this on the thing, but I would like to take a second to express some things that I feel about enhancing this. One of my biggest pet peeves is that when I ask students where they're going to go to college next year, when they walk through the graduation line, and I hand them their diploma, they say SMC. And I got, it just hurts me completely. And I've often spoke about the fact, you know, I would like to know that our students are college-ready. And the way that they, we get to know that they're college-ready is that if they apply to a four-year college and become accepted, then some college thinks they're ready to go to college. That's my feeling. But for whatever reason, some kids decide not to go to SMC, whatever it might be. But I do feel that we should be encouraging students to try to get into the four-year schools. And maybe if they do get in, they may go. And therefore, the idea of enhancing the college and career center is something that would be, something that we could look at by making it more feasible and exposing more students to the possibilities of schools that they've never even heard of, that they may decide they might like. And I know we have a college and career center at the high school now, and it's very good. I'm not complaining. But maybe if we were to expand it and reach out to the students with more advisors, if that's what you want to call them, that we might be able to improve the number of students who get accepted to four-year colleges. I just think it will also, if we have something like, it might increase their interest in looking into some of the possibilities that are there. I mean, I know that every week or every, whatever, they send out a notice at the college that these colleges are coming or something like that. But there must be a way of, through enhancing the career and college center, of making these more interesting to the kids, getting them to really feel like they have a chance to get into these schools. And so I would be one that would like to look into the fact that we could do something. And it would do a lot for our standing if we had more kids being accepted at the four-year colleges. So that's my thought on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. That's exactly one of the reasons why I brought it up. You know, Dr. Seaman and I had a conversation, I think about a year ago. And I kind of shared some requests, needs, desires, vision for the counseling department, which included more. And then we bumped into each other in the hallway at the old district office. And I said, how about, how about this? How about that? And he said, uh, needs four people. That needs four people. And so it stayed with me, and I've been trying to create the space for that team. You know, I interact with a lot of high schoolers, and it's funny what happens to them. Some of them are fascinated by Tulane. I don't know why, but they are. Some of them are fascinated by Wisconsin, and I don't know why. There's no direct flight to Wisconsin. But they are, you know? And then some of them are fascinated by UT Austin, and I don't know why, but they are. And so then Dr. Hasty and I discussed it, and Dr. Hasty shared with me. It's funny you say that, because actually, Naviance has a tool that if a student wants to get into Wisconsin, let's say, and it will research who from BHUSD has gotten into Wisconsin? What classes have they taken? Like, how do they get there? What does that roadmap really look like? And so then, this, our kids go from, it's either UCLA or Harvard, and nothing else in the middle. And that, and that, to me, is, then Mrs. Marcus gets the, I'm going to SMC. Because either you're going to UCLA, which 99% of kids are not getting into, or you're going into Harvard, which feels like the same thing. And so now, this is for everybody else who wants to get excited about a Miami, or a Wisconsin, or a UT, or, you know, Minnesota, yes. And so I think that it would be a really good idea, moving forward, to ask you three folks to set aside the dollars and start to build that program and figure out, what is Harvard-Westlake doing? I heard Geffen has a collaborative counseling and career, school counseling and college counseling team. So what is Geffen doing? What is Milken doing? What is Manhattan Beach doing? And our school counselors who are here tonight can only do so much. And so what's the missing link in what they're endeavoring to do? I don't have all the answers. Something tells me you already have a, like, all the light bulbs are going off, or would be if you weren't so tired tonight.
Can I, can I jump in real quick? So last time, in the last meeting, I think we spoke about it last meeting. It would be fabulous if we can help guide our students to fill out the applications. And even before that, I think what Mrs. Marcus, Mrs. Manishery said is incredible. And then if we can help them to do the application, even if they don't want to go to the universities, they can actually apply, get accepted. Remember, we discussed that before. And if we have some kind of program where we can do that, I think that'll change the whole path of what's going on.
And even to your point, like, for example, this year's PAC parents are an amazing group at the high school. And my understanding is that all of their students have gone into great schools. And so some of the, my 18-point plan is from speaking, which, from athletics and so on, is speaking with them. And so I do think that this would be an opportunity, maybe even to reach out to the BHUSD and Beverly Hills High School community to ask them, what would help serve the kids more?
We can pull some data to start assessing this. For example, the Common App, how many students have exhausted all 20 possibilities in the Common App? And so it's just little things like that. We could pull that number and just see. Like, if we had 100 students and they didn't exhaust the 20 schools in the Common App. You know, that's, so there, you get a, you want to talk about Common App and what that means?
I mean, we just did the Common App with my son, and it seemed to me you can add endless schools, no?
How many, I thought there was a max on the schools you could add. No?
No, there isn't a maximum. You can add endless. But we do have a lot of the data. What Dr. Hasty's saying is, through Naviance, through our senior exit surveys, through our BRAG sheets and stuff. So we do have a lot of exit survey information. But I do agree, is collecting earlier, such as programs like Avid. We're getting to our students earlier. We're having the college conversations quicker, informing them, you know, of options, other options, not just Harvard, and not just USC or UCLA, right? There are a ton of other schools to be able to select from. It's just UCLA. And then we got Minnesota over here. But, yes, I look forward to the challenge of being able to collect the data, being able to come back to the board, present a couple of concepts based off community feedback, based off our current data, based off even recommendations from our WASC. Taking all that and kind of putting it into a package and being able to come. After also working with Chris D. Bond and Shannon- After also, working with Chris D. Bond and Shannon Cabalis and Drew Stewart as well, who oversee that area of going and seeing Harvard-Westlake and Geffen. Also leaning on, like, I, I used Calabasas earlier, Calabasas High, Miracosta. So 100%, we, we look forward to this challenge. This is a great opportunity for us.
Let me ask you, when you do the pathways, and, and you know which direction the student is going and where they want to go, can it be incorporated into the pathways that, okay, now is the time to fill out the application? Now we're going to start getting the course of action to that, rather than leaving it to the student themselves or their parents? And, and making it happen in a way that they really don't need to decide if they want to go to that university, but they have the application done, sent in, and then, if they get accepted, then they make the decision?
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent idea, and I thank you for that. I think that we, within our pathways to success, we have a lot of our capstone courses, which lends themselves for this opportunity. We do have a small little pockets like that happening already, like, shout out to Chef Lee's, who takes a lot of his catering students, his capstone students, to different culinary arts programs, post-secondary, across the United States. So doing more of those opportunities where they get direct access to the admissions team, seeing the campuses, in addition to having them, you know, working through those applications, excellent idea. I think we'll, I'll bring that with part of our presentation.
Thank you, that would be great.
Okay, thank you very much. Very interesting situation, plans tonight. Good discussion. And that now brings us to the board members' reports. I will call on you, Mr. Russell Stewart, to make your report, if you have one.
Thank you so much. I just want to make a statement to the general public and anyone who's watching. We're in a really great spot right now. We have an incredible team of people sitting up here. We have a dedicated board who only wants to bring excellence to our district. We are working on programs for, for education. We're working on programs for bullying, for safety, for sports, for arts. We are digging through the books, as you've seen through these meetings, to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. We are hiring new staff that, we promise you, we are going to be making sure that they are the best of the best. So if anyone is concerned that we're not going in the right direction, or you've seen certain headlines that say that we're in crisis, we are far from it. We are not only in a fantastic spot right now, but we are pushing this ship towards an absolutely stellar future. And I just want to thank my colleagues. And I want to thank everyone out in the community who's been supporting us. Greatness is coming. We've been here, in three minutes will be 11 hours on this Tuesday.
Can you say that again, 11 hours? I think there are people who don't realize that.
11 hours on a Tuesday.
As have you guys.
Fighting for your community, and more importantly, your kids. So I just want to thank people, again, thank everyone up here. And just stay tuned, because we are working so hard to make everything fantastic for this district, for your kids, and for the taxpayers. And just give us a few more, you know, a few more weeks and months, and you're going to see an absolute change in the direction that this district has been going in for a long time. And it is all thanks to everyone that is sitting up here. And it's all thanks to everyone at home and the community for supporting these changes. And we're not going to let you down. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to acknowledge all the community members who engaged and responded to the BHUSD Superintendent Search Community Feedback Survey. We received the results. And these charts are actually much more helpful than I even anticipated. And so, thank you guys for putting them together for us. And I even wanted to suggest, Dr. Hasty, if my colleagues agree, perhaps you can send back the charts, not send back, I'm sorry. Share, send out the charts to the community, and let them know that we are in receipt. And we have, actually, each board member has received a copy of this. And it was under discussion and advisement today. And we're grateful for the response. And then also, to remind everybody that you're going to continue attending the PTA meetings, and that you've been doing that and sharing the feedback with us. So, thank you to everybody who, who took the time and trusted that this would be meaningful to us. It is meaningful to me, and it is taken under consideration, and to be continued.
Mrs. Sabat.
Thank you. So, Mrs. Manichari, again, took the words out of my mouth. I have everything prepared. So I did want to also say that about 508 people did respond to the survey. Is that... Oh, so is it, okay. So 197 people did respond to the survey. And parent and guardians were 64.3%. The students were 11.7%, which is awesome. I love that. The teachers were 10.7%. And how long they've been with the community? 56.9% over eight years. 22.8% four to seven years. 16.8% one to three years. So we have requested, you know, the printout to see everything. I personally read everything until after midnight last night. And we were here at 9:30 this morning, and we're still here. We're still going. And it was very interesting, reading all the comments. I, I loved it. I love that we did the survey. I love how people were involved. And with that said, yesterday, I also spent a good day with Dr. Seaman and Dr. Hasty at El Rodeo. Had an incredible time. I actually saw your daughter, Russell. I saw her in class. She didn't know who I was, but I knew who she was. And I also saw my, many years ago, a first-grade teacher, Ms. Erickson, Ms. Green, the most fabulous teachers. And the reason I stayed at the district, because that's when we first tried it out, years ago. So we have incredible staff, incredible teachers. I saw the classrooms. I saw the engagements. It was, it was wonderful. And we're going to continue that with the other schools. And also, we went to the committee, Mr. Stewart and I. If, maybe you can elaborate on the, on the committee that we went to regarding the bonds. And we asked a lot of questions. And the thing that stood out to me was that Mr. Nathan Kruger was there, and he complimented us. And he said, "It's really refreshing to have board members that are actually listening to us. We've been screaming from the rooftops for over three years about the questions that we're asking." And we were asking the same questions. So without getting into details, we were involved. We were there. And by the way, these are more volunteer work. So I have about five committees that I'm volunteering for, on top of being a board member. So thank you for everybody who's doing incredible work. And I think we are absolutely in the steps of the right direction. Thank you.
I really like what Mr. Stewart said. I like what you just shared, what all of you have shared. And in fact, I'm going to say again that it's been 11 hours. And every single one of us, including all three of you guys, you know, have been, really, I see everyone's engaged, and I have to get up because my back starts to hurt. I think Ms. Collins will understand. But, I mean, it really is because we care, and we really all want to work together. We are all on the board here, five different individuals, for sure. And that is what is beneficial, is that we all come, you know, with very different backgrounds and viewpoints. One thing that I want to bring to our attention, I often try to reflect and speak to city council members. They give me perspective about things, this job. I don't know if anyone thinks this, but it can be a stressful job. I don't know if you know that, but, you know, it can be stressful. And, you know, one thing that, that one council person has shared with me is that, you know, in this job, there is noise. And shall we say, there are people who will write unbelievable emails to you, or texts, or do things to you that are just, just awful, and offensive, and hurtful. And I've been told you need to ignore the noise. I've done a pretty good job of doing that. Most recently, something came out that went viral naturally, and actually gave a lot of chuckles to city council, I'm told. But information that was presented was, was not only extremely offensive, but false. It said, for example, "I was married to someone who I've never married to." So that in and of itself should suggest it's probably not anything but a gossip rag. But I want to caution adults about, you know, celebrating something like this, even though it was hilarious. Everyone has the right to post these things. But I caution you, because a lot of people, myself included, were offended by it. And I just would like that, like other pieces of noise, just to disappear. But the more we sort of celebrate it, the more it encourages someone to do that again. I'm told that someone posted this on a parenting website of Facebook. You know, ostensibly, a parent goes to look up something about parenting, but they're going to find this. And I just don't approve of that. I don't think it's right. And we want to be role models. We want to be leaders. So I think that when we get this noise, unless you guys think it has academic merit, or it is related to academic objectives, just think twice about some of the people who are being slaughtered in it. You know, we have people who volunteer for our schools. We have people who bring different things, and who are mentioned. You know, council member was mentioned in there, and who was very offended by it. So no one really, well, I should say, I don't want to see it posted. And I'm surprised when people do repost it. And I just want people to consider that. I also want to say that my thoughts on this are not a partisan issue. I have people very, very close to me who are Trump supporters. I have people very, very close to me who are the other side. That's not what this is about. What this is about is that when there are things that are patently and certifiably offensive, that do nothing but to foment and increase the noise so that everyone can be entertained on a Wednesday morning by reading these things, that to me is not productive, and it takes away from what we want. And I want our students to have great academic achievement, comfort, and I want the same for their families. And these types of things, in my opinion, detract from that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I would like to have just a few moments to talk about some of the things that have been going on, that I've been active in. First of all, a week ago, I attended the LAXA meeting with Dr. Hasty. And they talked about all the AB bills, and so on and so forth, none of which really meant a lot as far as we're concerned. They didn't affect us. Then they talked about the fact that there was a windfall of money. I think something in the terms of $2 billion, or something like that, or $4 billion. And it was going to be returned to the communities. And of course, my question came out, well, who's going to get the money? And it turns out, it's only for ADA districts. So we would not benefit from that. However, the one interesting point of it is, is that we are going to benefit. We are going to be supported in our TK program. And that was one of the things that came out. And then it's really exciting that, and I wanted to share that with you, that we are now going to be receiving funds for the TK program from the state. So there's a little bit of a, ha-ha, good, something good coming out of that, that meeting, and that was one of them. I also attended the Health and Safety Commission meeting yesterday. It was a typical meeting. The police department reported that their statistics are about the same, no change. They take great pride in being able to have a response time of less than three minutes. And yesterday, they reported for the month that they had a time of 2 minutes and 53 seconds. So they were very pleased with that. The fire department also had a report. And they said the only thing that was basically somewhat suspect was the fact that there's been more EMS calls than there were in the previous month, a year, at the same month, a year ago. And also, the police department is going to be doing a, they talked about pepper spray and about a class in self-defense that's going to be put on by the police department. You might want to watch for more interest on that, if you're interested. I want to also mention that on April 1st, I know I and several of the members of the committee, of the board, will be going to the city council, change of their administration. And Sharona Nazarian will be sworn in as the mayor. And I think that that would be an interesting evening. If you have some time, you might want to take it in. In terms of attending things during the district, I attended the instrumental music program at Beverly Vista. And I have to tell you, Elan Park did a great job with those kids. It gives me so much pleasure to watch these young students come to orchestra, many of them never playing an instrument before they got to the middle school. And all of them summon becoming musicians. And it really does such wonders for them to go up there and play their songs and, and, and learn music. It's very good for them. I attended the talent show last night, thanks to Dr. Stern providing me with a ride. And I have to tell you that our own Remy, who took third place with his piano playing. And then, of course, Dr. Stern, I knew it was going to happen, but she didn't. I was sure of it. Her son and his band got first place. But that was very exciting. Anyway, that was that. So before I close, I just want to wish everybody a happy Easter, or a happy Passover, and a wonderful spring break. Stay safe. Have a wonderful vacation. And a thank you to the K-BM for hanging out tonight and making the presentation possible on the air. So, thank you. Our next meeting will be April 15th, and I am now adjourning the meeting.
Wait, wait, one more thing. One more thing, Mrs. Marcus. Happy birthday to my husband.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday to our first responder.
Happy birthday. You didn't tell me fast enough. Yep, I did adjourn.